Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, February 12th, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua. Garcia. Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers. Sargent.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you so much for joining us here tonight, for those who are here in this room, and those who are watching on streaming, or TV, or whatever it is. We always start with a report from the superintendent, so Dr. Anderson.
Board President Marcus, members of the board, it's good to see you this evening. Thank you. Going in and out there. On January 24th, I was invited to participate and attend the Eisenhower Elementary School MLK Civil Rights Celebration. It's just an amazing, amazing event, an annual event. I'd encourage the board next year, if you get an opportunity, definitely go. It was really inspiring. I want to thank our parents and community for coming out to the six strategic, well, five, we almost had six, five strategic plan and community input sessions that we had over the past couple of weeks. We've got a lot of great feedback, and it's really going to put us in the right direction. I also want to thank those parents that came out to our February 5th public input session on our budget. We were able to hear from many parents that evening, and Bill Sutter, our CFO, did a great job of kind of explaining the budget and giving folks an opportunity to provide feedback. So last week, we did something a little bit differently, and I believe it was on Wednesday, where we actually, for the first time in as long as lots of people can remember, we actually went with a two-hour delay due to the snowstorm. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our community for working with us, thank our staff for executing what I thought was a really great plan to make sure that we were able to delay, to ensure that the roads were clear, and students were warm, and really was proud of our team to be able to do that. But I want to thank the community, and we've certainly been hearing from some of you, and on things we can do better, and we'll continue to try to improve, but we felt like that was the right decision. And special thanks to Rob Price and Randy Barber, who, from a communication and operations standpoint, just did an amazing job. Didn't sleep much that night. Neither did I, not because I was working, just because I was nervous, make sure that things went well, but it was, it went well. Also, I want to thank the parents. Over this past week, we held two forums for those parents interested in classical education. As the public will know, and as the board will know, that we've been working and working through the charter application for assent, and one of the things that we heard, even though we denied that application, was that there were parents within our community that were interested in classical education. And so got some great feedback from what it is, from that model that they would want to see for their kids, since that's going to be very helpful as we move forward. Speaking of the assent application, as you know, we'll be going to the state appeal on Thursday. We're going to be posting some information in regards to the process, just to keep our public up to date on where we are on our website. For those that are interested in watching, these are public meetings, and so it'll be at 2:00 PM on Thursday at the State Board of Education Building down at the Capitol. And we'll post the location, and also, if folks want a live stream, we'll post that on our website, so folks can stay in tune. We know that we've had lots of community input on both sides of the issue, and so we want to make sure that we're just being transparent, we have the information out there. And that is all for my superintendent's comments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board for Dr. Anderson? Kathy?
I just want to say thank you. I heard positive feedback about the two-hour late start. I know that it was the first time we did it, so there could be bumps in the road, but being the parent of a junior, I know she was quite happy. But anyway, from what I've heard, I think it went pretty smoothly, so thank you for implementing that policy. And I think the first time will be the hardest, and then people will get used to it. So thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we'll move on now to public participation. So the board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board first, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. We also have students speaking tonight, so they'll actually be the first to speak, and then we'll have our agenda items, and then our non-agenda items. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we won't do today, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. We'd like to be pretty strict about the two minutes, so that we can treat everybody fairly, so we will be cutting you off at two minutes. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two minutes starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments, so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. And if you aren't able to finish your comment, you can email the remainder to us. We all read our email, we're really good about it, so please feel free to email anything that you weren't able to convey during your two minutes. Okay, so we're going to start tonight with our student speakers, and we'll first have Arthur Easton.
I'm eight, and I'm in third grade at Ryan Elementary. I love my teacher, and I really enjoy when she tells us stories and teaches us math and reading. Sometimes she uses Chromebooks a lot during the day. I don't like it. My eyes get tired, and I don't interact much with my friends and my teacher. But by the way, we only have 30 minutes of outside recess per day. It's too little. I want to play and work with my friends more than I want to be on a Chromebook, even if I can play on the device at school. I know we're not supposed to, but sometimes web searches popped bad images or videos, or I clicked on the i- by accident. When I was in first grade, I was six, my birthday's in June, my group and I searched for a project about planes. We searched about plane parts. One of my friends wanted to search about gun parts on planes, but then we ended up, um, images about girl parts. That scared us and was not good. I don't like using Chromebooks much, and I would prefer learning with my teacher and discussing with friends with books and writing by hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Benjamin Easton.
My name is Benjamin Easton. I am six and in first grade at Ryan. I love creating books with drawings and writing stories. I want to learn to write while learned course and I love cliffy. I, a Chromebook does not teach me that. I also like to read funny books. Sometimes you can flip the pages fast and it makes the character move. I don't like reading on a Chromebook. Sometimes I see students in the corridor with a Chromebook, and I wonder what they do. They don't seem to work, and it's weird and not fair. I like school and my teacher, but I wish we had more recess. It's only 30 minutes of recess, and spend less time on Chromebooks. I like to play and talk with my friends about math and writing stories. Thank you.
Okay, and we have Florence Bouquet.
Good evening. So my name is Florence Bouquet, parent of a first grader and third grader. This are my kids. I run in Ryan Elementary. I'm here to speak, in speak with, representing more than 400 parents that are following what we have to say here. A number of parents, we're worried about the internet safety. And so first, thank you for the work that we have started towards that, and we really appreciate it. Now, I'm here to still express our concern about screen time. Chromebooks are used constantly for rewards, for punishment, for pacifying disturbing students, for pacifying half a class while a teacher maybe teaches the other half. This is happening on second grade at Ryan right now. The classes' size are too large. Chromebooks are also used for reading, during math, even for having a book being read to the kid, so I think it's not quite appropriate. Chromebooks are becoming a substitute to teaching, instead of being a tool for education. Screen time becomes enormous. Kids can spend up to four hours per school day on this Chromebook, and this is not acceptable. Brain science research shows that screen time is addicting, and the tech giants know how to make it, make the contents for which the human brain can want more of. So in a sense, right now, as it stands, BVSD is creating the next generation of screen addicts. We, parents, want transparency about how much screen time our kids are having within the BVSD walls. We also want to know what they are doing on the devices. And so this info could be given regularly on the pie chart on Infinite Campus for interested parents, and it will also be valuable data for BVSD to know that, for the teachers, for the IT department. It could be per grade, per school, very valuable. So we can target the use of Chromebooks for educational purposes only. And I recall children's first, right? So we really need to put the children's out first. I think until then, we should definitely err on the side of a little. Screen time is better than more, and we request transparency. So let's maybe not roll out the Chromebooks right now in March and have all this policy in place. Thank you.
Okay, next we have, and forgive me, Tanya Shana, okay, and who has given two minutes from Sue Brodsky.
I have four minutes. I am a parent of a fifth grader and a seventh grader, and we have had an excellent experience in BVSD. We have a lot of things to celebrate about our kids' education. I'm one of many parents at BVSD concerned about cell phones in the classroom, who advocate for district-wide, away-for-the-day cellphone policy in elementary and middle schools. We have a Google group, we're members of a Facebook page, and we are actively engaged. This issue matters to parents in BVSD. So away-for-the-day is a cellphone policy where cell phones stay at home or in lockers during the day, and are not allowed in classrooms, lunchrooms, or recess. Parents can reach students before or after school on their cell phones, or via the front desk during the day. When cellphone use is up to teacher discretion, students carry phones on their body the whole school day, regardless of whether they are allowed in a particular class or not. Cell phones nearby will distract when they are on student bodies. And distraction, we all know, is anathema to learning and engaging. There's simply no educational or practical need for cell phones in elementary and one-to-web middle schools. At least four other middle schools, Casey Manhattan Platte Summit currently have away-for-the-day policies. The argument that each school or teacher should form their own cellphone policy due to different characters of the school or class does not withstand educational scrutiny. There's no school demographic or culture that would recommend more distraction for students in the classroom, none. So the argument for principal or teacher discretion in setting cellphone policy does not uphold the educational standards of BVSD. So Casey Middle School is a really excellent case study. It's a one-to-web school. Last year, they had a very lax cellphone policy, where it was up to teacher discretion, and then they switched this year to have away-for-the-day. And I'm just going to read from Principal Justin McMillan's letter to parents. The adoption was very seamless, it went well, and we've had a year of away-for-the-day, and it went extremely well. But I want to read his letter, because it's a great argument for why to adopt away-for-the-day. So he starts with explaining, and I'm now quoting from his letter to parents. Currently, our students are allowed to carry phones, but not use them unless the teachers say they may. However, this policy is proving hard for students to follow, and adults, i.e. their parents and the teachers, to manage. So he explains that next year, we're going to have away-for-the-day. We feel that this decision will support our goal to build and maintain a positive school culture and community for our students. Like many schools in the US, he says, we are struggling with school billing and student distraction because of cell phones. Moreover, one-to-web, there's no longer a need for personal technology in the classroom. So science and research supports students who do not have freedom of accessing their phones during school hours. Those students who don't have that freedom of access are more engaged, and both socially and academically. He goes on to cite a report that found that schools banned mobile phones had higher achievement, particularly among low-achieving and low-income students. So, an away-for-the-day cellphone policy promotes student well-being and learning, which really should be the metric by which the board evaluates this educational policy. So I ask you, please vote in support of a district-wide, away-for-the-day cellphone policy for elementary and middle schools. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Anna Segur.
Hello, everyone. I'm part of a group of parents who filed complaints about how technology is being used in the classroom. I would like to thank Superintendent Anderson for selecting Sam Messier to lead this task force, as she's been a wonderful counterpart. She's been thoughtful, respectful, with a willingness to listen and hear, and I appreciate her grounding in objective research and best practice, as well as her focus on putting student safety and education first. While I support many technology recommendations that Sam developed, there are still areas where the focus of students and education first has not been applied. I'm requesting that the board use the student and education first approach to distinguish between educational content that belongs in BVSD classrooms and noneducational content that has no educational benefit, no link to curriculum standards, and presents unnecessary risks for students. Gaming and social media are open in high school. There is no educational justification to have this content available. I have not seen one lesson plan or curriculum standard that requires students to demonstrate competency in gaming or social media. While it's possible that some days, some teacher could possibly use gaming or social media in a lesson plan, the likelihood is that while available, they will be used on a daily basis to distract students away from their real lessons to the detriment of their education. Online advertising and marketing emails to BVSD student email accounts also serve no educational purpose, but present a significant risk of distraction to students. Please treat technology no differently than other media in schools. Students are a captive population, and as such, it's unethical to expose them to online advertising and marketing. As board members, you have the power to ensure that the district puts education, student safety first. Please prioritize education, student safety, and request BVSD block online advertising, gaming, and social media, because they have no educational value, they're not linked to curriculum standards, and they present high risk of distraction to the detriment of students' education and learning. Thank you.
Okay, Carrie White.
Timing myself, so I can be respectful. Hi, I'm Carrie White. I am a fifth-grade parent at University Hill Elementary School, and I'm also a PTA president, and have been for three years. And I say this not because I come representing the parents in that group, but more so to tell you that at that elementary school level, with our attendance at meetings, and all the things we have to address, we really can't tackle a topic such as cellphone policy and the complexities of technology at that level. I have been so fortunate to work with a group of parents, most of them who are here. Thank you so much for our time with Sam, as Anna mentioned. It's been a great process, and so I do support most of the recommendations that are coming to you from her working group. We have also shared this document, I think it will be shared with you this evening, and this is a document that our group put together. My main concern that I wanted to touch on tonight was the quantity of screen time and distracted learning that is happening because of technology. It's critical for the district to understand, evaluate, and make recommendations on how much time is acceptable at each, the elementary, middle, and high school level, especially before you release Chromebooks with the one-to-web program. I think nobody in this room knows how much time. I don't know how much time my student is spending on technology at school, and I'm not sure that anybody can say that, and I think that's critical to know. Secondly, there's so much research and articles that show that we are producing students that are distracted learners. So many of these recommendations will help reduce that, and we're showing that students are less productive, and their memory is worse. So please put education and safety first when it comes to our students. Thank you.
My apologies, Sarah Adlerstein. Adlerstein, maybe. I got it, all right.
Okay, gotta set my flip phone here.
All right, here we go.
All right, I'm here tonight to share a specific concern I have regarding the tech policy as it's currently drafted. But first, I want to express my gratitude to the board for voting to postpone the original rollout date from January to March. To me, that really shows your willingness to slow things down, be thoughtful and thorough, and do it right. So I appreciate that, and it gives me hope for this next rollout. I'm in full support of the recommendation to offer parents the choice to opt out of having their students having the Chromebook 24/7. As I understand it, families will have the option to leave the Chromebooks at school after hours. This is such an important choice you're giving families, especially since the Chromebooks will not yet have on-device filters on them. But even if the filters were in place, there will be some families, including my own, who feel that their sixth grader are not ready to own a personal computer. There's a myriad of reasons why that might be, which I won't go into right now, but suffice to say, I'm grateful I can opt out and avoid the conflicts I see otherwise. But my concern is regarding homework. It will be necessary to ensure that all assignments given will not depend on having a Chromebook at home. Otherwise, this opt-out option is an empty offer, and worse than that would put the child at an unfair disadvantage. Currently, the proposed policy reads, "Should a parent or guardian have concerns about access to technology, the district will consider reasonable accommodations for that student." This language needs to be more committed, and more direct, and more specific, to be meaningful. I would suggest something like, "The district will ensure that students are provided reasonable accommodations for instructional assignments." Thanks for your time.
Okay, thank you. Alex Markles.
Thanks so much for letting me come up here and echo the concerns of others about technology in school. I just want to offer one quick anecdote that was related to me by the CIO of the Boulder Valley School District during a working session. He explained that at Casey, an enterprising student had found a way to make money with his cellphone. He had a hotspot that his parent had provided him access to through his cellphone. And even though he was, he had put the device in his locker, he was selling access to his fellow students for a couple dollars apiece. I bring up this anecdote solely because I think it underscores the difficulty of keeping children directed during the school day. If, I have personally seen circumstances where students have been able to hop on other students' hotspots and game, and do all kinds of things that are totally inappropriate for the school day. And the CIO underscored the fact that when a student hops onto this hotspot with his Chromebook or his computer, he bypasses, he works around all of the filters that the BVSD has set up to prevent access to things like games, and things far worse. So I really beseech you to consider the away-for-the-day program, not only in elementary and middle school. I know it would be difficult, but I'd like to see it in high school as well. Thanks.
Okay, Anna Fernandez-Frank.
Hello, my name is Anna Fernandez-Frank, and I have two kids in BVSD. I am really encouraged by all the progress we have made since we started working with Sam Messier, and I look forward to working with this board to see how we can turn some of these initiatives into concrete policies. You have heard already about some of our concerns regarding rolling out one-to-web before all the safeguards and safety measures are in place. I just want to highlight that those students that will be most affected by this rushed rollout are our low-income students, mostly Latinos, who have parents that work long hours, and they might not have the time or the expertise themselves to proactively monitor how their children are using their Chromebooks. I ask you to please prioritize the safety of our most vulnerable students. The other item I want to bring up is Google Chats. This is a messaging feature that comes with our BVSD account, and that kids can access during their school hours and beyond. It is basically a texting service that is always connected, and it pops up every time they receive a message, but they don't even have to have a phone to use it. Please disconnect this service. It is distracting, and it's not being used for collaboration on school projects, but to send memes and videos during class. My son had a situation in which a group of students were using Google Chats to discuss self-harm and suicide. So I had to contact the school counselor, who was absolutely unaware of this. Most BVSD parents don't even know that this is a feature that is provided with their BVSD account, and therefore, they cannot monitor or have conversations about it with their children like they would if they found these messages on their cellphones. Please block Google Chats so that students can focus on learning. Please delay the one-to-web rollout until all the safeguards are in place, and please adopt away-for-the-day cellphone policies through BVSD, throughout BVSD. Thank you for your time.
Okay, and Jennifer Kreisman.
I am speaking as one of the representatives here tonight that represent over 400 parents, and we're asking for the postponement of the March rollout of the Chromebooks, and also for the implementation of the away-for-the-day cellphone policy. We are very happy with the number of the recommendations that have been made by the consultants and Sam Messier in light of the Chromebooks. We are hopeful that these recommendations will serve our children well once they're in place. However, there are already Chromebooks in the classrooms without the safeguards that are recommended by Sam and the consultants. Furthermore, there will be approximately 3,700 Chromebooks rolled out in March without the safeguards that are recommended by Sam and the consultants. If BVSD is serious about putting children first, and I believe that they are, then surely, before any more Chromebooks make their way into the classrooms, two things have to happen. One, all existing Chromebooks in classrooms must have the safeguards placed on them without any further waiting. Two, all new Chromebooks, before they're given to students, must have the safeguards placed on them. If these two things are not done, then BVSD simply cannot say that it puts the safety of children first, but instead, it seeks to put technology ahead of education. These BVSD recommendation safeguards are on-device filtering, classroom management software, and whitelisting. We ask that BVSD follow a straightforward and logical plan to ensure that all Chromebooks in all schools are in compliance with these BVSD-endorsed safety measures. If this means that the March rollout of Chromebooks has to be postponed, we ask that BVSD do the right thing, and postpone the rollout, thereby honoring their commitment to keep our children safe. Further, we ask that BVSD implement the away-for-the-day cellphone policy. Thank you.
Okay, and moving to non-agenda items, we have Carrie Whalen.
Members of the board, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a parent to a first and third grader at Coal Creek Elementary, and we have a wonderful school, where our teachers and our principal have created a great learning environment for our children. However, for at least one-third of our school year, our school building is not an optimal learning environment. learning environment. We don't have air conditioning, and frankly, it's a sauna. Thursday, August 16th, at 12:00 p.m., the outdoor temperature was 88 degrees. Friday, August 24th, 88 degrees. Thursday, September 13th, 93 degrees. These are all taken at noon. Tuesday, September 18th, 90 degrees. No one in this room tonight would have wanted to teach or learn in our school building in August or September of 2018. I'm glad this topic was covered in tonight's special meeting. I hope that air conditioning in the hottest schools remains a priority for the bond premium funds. Our climate is changing, school start dates are creeping earlier in August, and this is not something we can push off another year. Thank you.
Okay. Todd Lammers.
Yeah, there was Christopher?
Sorry, Christopher Karnouskas. My apologies.
President Marquess, members of the board, good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Chris Karnouskas, and I'm the proud father of a Coal Creek first grader, and my daughter is soon to enter kindergarten. In my day job, I'm a tenured professor of atmospheric science at CU Boulder and an affiliate faculty member of the Schools of Medicine and Public Health, and I frequently serve as a consultant to the UN Development Program on matters concerning climate change. I'd like to make a comment as a private citizen tonight about the proposed use of bond funding to install air conditioning at Coal Creek Elementary in Lewisville. I have thoroughly reviewed the scientific literature on the linkages between heat and learning, including one study published last year out of Harvard, written by colleagues who I know to be highly regarded in the field. Put simply, these studies show that cognitive function is impaired when indoor temperature is elevated. Nobody is more concerned about climate change than me. In terms of energy efficiency and sustainability, I'll remind you that these buildings are designed to efficiently trap heat inside during winter. They're very good at that. It also means that during warm months, this efficiency advantage turns into a severe disadvantage for our children and their teachers. Not deploying air conditioning in schools that's so clearly needed is no more a way to brand ourselves sustainable, as skipping a spelling test is a way to prove oneself a good speller. I know Boulder Valley can do better than that, and we do. We at Coal Creek, for example, have an impressive array of solar panels. Finally, I'd like to recommend that you make decisions on infrastructure in the context of a changing climate, not the weather you measured just the other day. My expert analysis using state-of-the-art models indicates that outdoor air temperatures around here will rise by a little over a degree Fahrenheit per decade. That is, in 2040, BVSD kids will walk into schools in mid-August that without AC will be about four degrees hotter than it was on the first day of school a decade ago. No student or teacher in BVSD should be uniquely subject to such conditions on any basis. Let's do the right thing and make Coal Creek safer and more conducive to learning. Please fund air conditioning for Coal Creek Elementary. Thank you for your time.
Okay. And now Todd Lammers.
Thanks for having this forum where we can speak openly to you guys. I really appreciate that. I was noting that you mentioned the word thrive at the beginning and the onset of your mission statement. I think a lot of what we're talking about right here in so many different topics is allowing our kids the opportunity to thrive, whether that's air conditioning, technology, and we have to figure out the right way to do that, right? So, you know, I think thrive implies that it's not just adequate, right? We want to unhamper the ability for these kids to learn. As the gentleman just before me just pointed out, classroom temperature, although it seems like a very simple subject, is probably one of the most fundamental key items for any type of environment, including this one, right? This is a very nice environment. We're all very comfortable. Where I work, we have a, you know, a first and foremost rule that a recipe for a disaster meeting is to have a hot room. All right, you get everybody in there, and it's hot, nothing good is going to come out of that room. It's the same thing with students. I have a second grader, and if you sit down and try and teach them vowels or subtraction in an 89-degree room, that's not going to go well, okay? So I think we're all on the same page. There's no data suggesting that a hot room is beneficial for learning, and neither's a cold room. So we got the cold room aspect, sounds like taken care of. All we're asking is that when improvements are made to schools, that we make the right choices in terms of, if you're putting in a heating unit, well, think about putting an AC at the same time. I would also vouch for the entire of BVSD, that it seems like a good idea to have air conditioning across the board, right? Temperature-controlled learning is the way to go. Remove that as a variable from the system. The teachers don't need to be worrying about this propping up fans by windows, and they're noisy, right? We don't need that. We need them to focus on learning, and that's kind of why we're here. Thank you.
All right. And our last speaker, Spencer Downing.
I'm here to echo the last two gentlemen. The first job I had after college was teaching middle school in the middle of tobacco fields in North Carolina. We didn't have snow days, but we had heat days. And now, my kids go to Lafayette Elementary, and what you've just heard not only is scientifically true, but anecdotally true. When I went there and opened house, I could barely hear the teachers over the sounds of the fans that were struggling to make that a bearable room. And again, these bonds only come so often, and you get very few chances to really make structural improvements that will last for a while. So please do the right thing, invest, invest well, and listen to my fellow citizens. We're talking about distractions, and we're talking about the things that are about focus and learning, and room temperature is one of those things. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
Okay, thank you. That concludes public participation, so we'll move on to board comment. Would any board members like to say anything? Kitty.
For once, I have a few things to say. So I was able to attend two events since our last board meeting that I thought were just great. The first one was an adaptive ninja warrior event for what they call the unified team? I have a T-shirt for it, something, anyway, for kids in special ed. And it was a wonderful experience. They had these courses that the kids were going over, and there was one boy who was absolutely determined to get over this climbing wall that was, you know, about this high. And there were at least four adults helping him, but he was determined, and he did it. And it was just so exciting to see that. And I, you know, I didn't get a chance to speak to him, but he had to have felt really good about himself to be able to do that. I was also a judge at National History Day at Broomfield Heights, and I had never even heard of it before, let alone be a judge. And my group of judges were judging exhibits, and we had a lot of the special ed kids in our group. And the exhibits went from fantastic to did it last night, and everywhere in between. But I learned a lot when I was there. There were a lot of things I didn't know. These kids had researched. I didn't know the ERA was written in the 1920s or 1919, sometime around there. But I got a note, a very sweet note, from a student just telling me how excited he was to do National History Day and how he wanted to do it every year. And it was just the sweetest thing. And, yeah, and I've visited a couple of schools, Aspen Creek and Heatherwood and Uni Hill. So that's all I have to say. Oh, and thank you all for coming to speak, and especially thank you to the children who spoke.
All right. Other board members? Donna?
Arthur and Benjamin, I was so impressed with your reading skill and your writing. There goes mom, and mom as well. And also, thank you to the Coal Creek people that invited me out to hear you in person, and Rob got to talk. Arthur, Benjamin, not only are you dressed impeccable, but I'm impressed with your reading and writing skills. Thank you.
Okay. Other board members? Richard.
I want to echo what Donna just said. Arthur, Benjamin, you were right on. I think Ryan Elementary ought to be very proud of you. Did a good job. I want to thank the people that came in, especially the people that are concerned about technology and cellphone and all that stuff that we need to consider here, and also the folks on the air conditioning. Those are big decisions that we have to make, and I'm sure we're going to make the right ones. And I did visit Uni Hill Elementary School this morning. I don't know why I always go there, but I went there on business this morning, but it was nice to see people there. And one of the things that I was reminded is the garden level of the school, which is kind of like the dungeon, but it's got some excellent lighting in there, you know? I mean, they got big rooms, nice windows. And then we took a tour at the transportation center, which is really cool because it really displayed all the great work that we're doing with the bond dollars. And Albert was beaming and very, very proud of the work that they're able to do now, not that they weren't doing that work before, but it's really modernized our transportation department a lot, so thanks, bond people and the voters here in Boulder Valley School District, to support the bond and all the other stuff that they support.
All right. Other comments? Shelley?
Oops. I lost my notes. Oh, well, I can't find them. Anyway, I want to thank everyone who came to speak about the tech issues in the district and also air conditioning. I think we're going to be able to do something about some of the air conditioning issues, and I hope that all of you that are concerned about tech in the district will stay, because we're going to be discussing those policies tonight. So thank you for coming and sharing your opinions. I also wanted to say that at the end of January, I attended the Advocacy Institute in Washington, DC, and that is a, every year, all the school boards from across the country come together in Washington to discuss certain legislative issues that they want to take and talk to their congresspeople about. And I could only take a day and a half off, so I chose to go on the early end of the conference and go to the Equity Symposium, which was a special day they had this year in advance of the regular conference. And it was really interesting conversation. A lot of the talk was about how the face of our school districts are changing, that we have more and more kids of color, more and more kids who are underrepresented in our school districts, and, you know, how do we accommodate their needs? And of course, at all these things, there are multiple breakout sessions, and one I felt that was most helpful at the Equity Symposium was one on distributed leadership. And typically, what that means is that if you have a, you know, typically, a CEO makes all of the decisions and, you know, ultimately, all of the decisions in their organization. But distributive leadership really is about teams kind of working together to not necessarily make the decisions, but certainly have more of an influence on the decisions than just the CEO. But this particular talk was about expanding that notion of distributive leadership to organizations outside district, or outside the school district itself. So it would be, for example, bringing in parent communities, law enforcement community, business leaders, just really bringing in all the parts of the community to be part of decision-making, not just to give input. So, and they had a lot of statistics talking about how effective that is for student outcomes. So it was interesting, if anyone wants to know more about it, I took pretty extensive notes in that one. So I really enjoyed that. And then the main focus of the conference was really to convince all of our congress critters that they really do need to fully fund IDEA, which is our, you know, of course, the funding we get for kids with disabilities. And to, I think they're funding it at about 40% now, as opposed to 100%, and they're relying on state and local sources of funding to do what really they've committed to do. So it was really having all of the school district representatives hit them hard in their meetings with their congressmen, so, or congresspeople. So that, I thought it was a pretty good conference. These things are always hit or miss, but I actually enjoyed it a lot. So thank you for encouraging me to go and letting me go. I think it was well worth the time. Thanks.
Can I ask a question? Is that something, you've gone for several years, right? Oh, okay. And so is that something any board member can do?
Well, I'm, I'm the representative from this district, but I, or I used to be. This past year, I don't know, I think Kathy's now on Casby, so she gets to go as a Casby member. But for the district, usually every region has a representative, and I've been the region for, just representative for many years.
No, because I'm just thinking you're off the board in November.
No, 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 yeah. Matt Cook is the person to talk to.
And so that's through Casby, because I don't remember, did we appoint you through a vote, or how did that happen?
I was appointed, and I don't remember if it was a vote or, I think it was back when we talked about committees and who would be on committees. Back then, I was opted for that, and I was born.
Okay. So that, yeah. It all sounds familiar, so I think just to keep in mind, that's something we would perhaps want to continue over time.
Yeah, no, I think so.
Yeah, that position's currently open, so we need to think about getting somebody on that, since Shelley's going off the board, so.
Okay. Are there any further duties this year, or is that done now?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, there are other meetings that you can attend, for sure, and they meet in Denver a couple times a year. Usually, they meet before this conference to talk about, to get together and strategize, so, and they meet usually at the Casby Conference at the Broadmark in December. They meet as a subgroup to talk about...
Did you meet with them this year?
I didn't see it on schedule this year, so, yeah.
Okay. And so is this something you want to continue through November, or do you want to unload it anytime soon?
I think it, I think it would be good to transition to whoever wants to go next, yeah. Because there's not really that much that happens now. It's more before the conference in January.
Okay. So if any board members are interested in, okay, okay. I was going to say, think about it. We could talk about it at the next board meeting, so, but we have interest, so that's great. That's great. Thank you.
I'm happy to talk to you, Kitty, because there are additional responsibilities going forward, including a tour that we take with our local legislators that takes some planning and time commitment, so.
Any other comments, board members? No, Sam? Okay, Kathy?
I too was at FRN. I led the Colorado delegation to the conference, and I went to the advocacy breakout on Saturday and attended the entire conference, including meeting with our board, our legislators, and I found it encouraging that they all took time to meet with us. And I found that the stories from the, my fellow board members from across the state were compelling and really interesting stories to tell. Found out that one of our board members from Fort Collins actually got to meet President Obama and was one of the eight letters that he read every day, and invited her to the, one of his addresses, and there's pictures of her in front of the White House. It was really kind of cool to find these things out about our fellow board members. So it's a, it is a good opportunity. The keynote speaker at the advocacy was the young man who started Donors Choose, and we got a card that I'm going to give to one of our schools for Donors Choose. It's a great story. I won't bore everybody with the story right now. So the FRN network, I think, is doing really good work, and hopefully, we'll see some change. The NSBA strategy for IDEA is a two-year strategy, because they know that it's going to take some time to actually get legislators up to speed, but our legislators were pretty up to speed, I think, on it. So it was great meeting with them. And it was the day, I think, after the government was back in action, so it was a little crazy on the hill, as you might imagine, with people running around trying to figure out how to get the government back to work. I also went to the Latino Strategic Planning Meeting, and that was awesome. And thanks to Ari and to everybody who came and helped translate, I thought there was really good energy in the room. I thought the idea of providing buses to get families there was a really awesome idea. I was worried that I'd walk in and there'd be three families, and in fact, the conference rooms in the back were full. Thanks to you, Dr. Anderson, for leading that work and including our Latino families, and I look forward to the continuing work along the plans of the Latino and just our general strategic plan. And then on Saturday night, I was at a, it's called the Colorado Youth Tennis Foundation, and they honored the, I'm going to get it right now, Randy, Peak to Peak. I wrote Randy and told him it was high peaks, and he wrote me back and said, "I don't think we have any tennis teams at elementary school," but I might be wrong. That's what I get for sending early Sunday morning emails. But it was great, because the whole team was there, and the coaches, and they were honored for winning in their 3A. They took state in tennis. I know it was a long time ago, but this only meets once a year, and so I just thought it would be great to do a shout-out to Peak to Peak for the great showing that they had for their women's tennis. And some of the other teams that were honored, there was a very poor showing, and we had the entire team there. It was just awesome. showing, and we had the entire team there. It was just awesome, and the enthusiasm. And Kitty, I, a shout-out to you because you gave the speech at the Centaurus Ruben Cutting, and we did that in between the last two board meetings. And that was awesome to get the tour of the, of Centaurus. And you did a really nice job giving a speech on behalf of the board, so appreciation for that. And then, have seen a couple of schools along, as everybody else has. Heatherwood, Kitty and I got to see that today, and it was great to see what the before is going to be, and then we'll look forward to the after. And we, they sent an email out to the whole board because the whole school is doing a presentation on their project-based learning. So, we asked the Board Secretary to send that out to the board in case anybody wants to go for that, because I think that would be pretty awesome if anybody can attend that. The Transportation Center, I was surprised at how excited I was over it. It's actually pretty cool, isn't it, Richard? And Albert gave us a great tour, and it's pretty exciting to see all of the, just to see the guts of the school district at work, you know. He said, what, four bus drive, four technicians have to start the buses on a cold day, because the bus drivers don't know what a diesel engine sounds like when it's cold, and they could burn out the battery. But you have four technicians starting a hundred and forty buses, and they get there at four in the morning to make sure that the buses are comfortable for the bus drivers and the students on really cold days. And so, if you haven't gone to look at the Technology Center, it's a, it's a pretty cool thing to do, and just to see all of the hard work that goes on. And now, we're starting to do the badges, so the room was full of all the badges, so we can make sure we know where kids are getting on and off buses. So, that was great. And then, a tour of Aspen Creek was also along the line. And then, we had the Audit Committee meeting, and it was great to have Bob Smart as our community member, talking and making sure that dollar money is being safely guarded with Colorado Trust. I would not want it to have been on the receiving end of all of his questions, but I thought that the meeting went really well. And not surprisingly, our audit is clean from our fourth quarter audit. And so, it was just, I really appreciated the time and energy that Bob Smart put into thinking about these issues and making sure that our, our money is being safely taken care of and guarded. And while I'm on that line, a shout-out to him for state, for the Fairview Girls Swim Team. I loved his quote in the paper, "The army of ants that it took to be able to win the state championship for Fairview Swimming." So, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you all for coming out and sharing about technology and air conditioning. I saw Kitty fanning herself a little bit, so I think, strong voice for AC over there. In any case, our next item is an information item. It's the Communications Update and Preview. Randy Barber's coming up. Join us.
President Marquez, board members, good evening. I'm excited to be here. It's been about a year and a half since I got to the school district, and this is our first formal presentation, at least, about communications, although I know I've talked to a number of you about the things that we're doing. Want to give you a little update in terms of that, the work that my team's been up to, and then also a little preview in terms of where we're going. When I think about communication and what we're doing, we really break it into three areas. The heart of the school district is about the brand. It's what we stand for, it's what we believe, it's hopefully what people think of when they walk into our buildings. We really, as a Communications Department, want to make sure that that brand is strong, continuing forward, and that we're, you know, making sure that it's out there in the ways that we want it to be. The connection that we have, that, if you think about different parts of the body, the hand, so heart and the hand, we want to be making sure that we're making connection to our community, pulling them in, engaging with them, a lot of the things that we were just talking about, the forums that we've been having is something that my team supports in terms of getting out promotion, but then also trying to make sure that we, you know, celebrate that work, and then also be there to, you know, welcome people in and to provide them information as well, as much as we can. And then finally, there's the mind aspect of what we do, which is really trying to provide information to the stakeholders, really inform them about what the school district's doing, ensure that they're updated about the things that are happening. This is a very large job in a school district of our size, and so, we want to make sure that we're always moving that process forward. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about the heart first, the brand. Most people, when they think about brand, they think about the logo, but it's about far more than that. When I think about it, I think about these kind of photos. It's about what's going on in our school. And my favorite thing to say, ever since I've worked for school districts, is it's amazing to see the things that happen in our buildings. It's amazing to go into classrooms, the energy that you feel, the smiles that you see, the work that's going on, the amazing projects. That's what we're trying to capture. That's what we obviously, at the board level and beyond, we're trying to do. As a communications team, we're trying to make sure that that brand is telling the community, this is what BVSD is about. We are BVSD. Right now, sometimes when we talk about brand, it's a little disjointed. We actually went through a project in the last year that you guys gave us the okay on, the digital communication project. And part of that was to give us a real survey of what communication looked like. And one of those things is that we're a little all over the place right now with communication. We've got a lot of different logos, we've got a lot of different looks, different websites. We're a little disjointed. And so, one of our efforts right now is to try to bring us under one umbrella, to make sure that we're all part of the same family. It may be brothers and sisters in the same family in some cases. We definitely want to celebrate our diversity and our differences. And in some of our departments, there's a lot of, you know, things that are going on. I think about our food services. I think I see, you know, Ann in the, in the audience today. The work that they're doing is outstanding. We want that to feel a little bit differently than what we're doing in the classroom, so we want to celebrate that, but ensure that our departments, you know, look a way that celebrates the school district and is under that brand. One of the things that we know is that our schools and our departments want to support the things that we're doing and speak in one voice, speak their message out to their communities, but do it in a way that really ties into the school district. I think everybody is very proud. Boulder Valley has a lot of equity in its brand. Everybody knows what that is. Think of high-quality schools. But they don't always know what, what that looks like or what we should be doing about it. So, one of the things that we've done this year is develop a brand guideline book that helps to sort of, you know, organize the thought of what we're trying to be, you know, what kind of photos represent the school district, how to do that in a good way, how to use a logo, you know, what that should look like, to make sure that we, again, in any sort of appearance, look the best that we can. You know, I think this, you know, is one of the most important things that we do, really, the stakeholder engagement aspect of things. We can broadcast things out all day long, but really, it's about those actual connections. So, I believe in community relations. I believe in really working with schools to ensure that they, they think of how they're approaching folks in an interpersonal communication manner. Obviously, that's not something I get to control, but it's something that we're trying to infuse into the, into the organization. But what we can do is really organize the way that we have engagement. So, again, with our multiple forums that we've done recently, we've really tried to make sure that that was well-organized, promoted, that we had materials, and we're trying to get that into a system that makes it very simple as we, as we go forward, that we have tools in place for our leaders so that they can gather that feedback, not just through forums, but in other ways. And so, we'll certainly be looking for that in the future. As I mentioned, the last part is about the way that we try to inform people about the things that we do. And part of that is about marketing, and part of that's about information. As you may know, we have long had a number of good avenues. This team, long before I was here, did a lot of great things with newsletters that went out, things like Thrive that helped, you know, involve our parents in terms of different tips that they needed to know, that kind of thing. Since I've gotten here, we've tried to, you know, expand that, and we've tried to make sure that we have good avenues to carry information in both English and Spanish to our parents about the good things that are going on in the school district, again, the changes that are going on. I can only say that we've got more work to do in this arena. We certainly are continuing to expand and try to also think about how parents need and want information. In today's world, everybody's got different types of technology that they prefer to get it, or in some cases, they don't have technology. We have to think about all of these different things as we're, as we're looking at our approach. One of the models that I, I like to look at is the Peso Model. It talks about convergence of media. You can certainly have things that you own, like the newsletters that I was just showing up on the screen, that we're very proud of. Obviously, now, in today's world, a lot of people are on social media, so you want to go to where they're at. You want to make sure that you're communicating to them in a place where they're already talking to their friends and have an engagement with them. You can earn media. I think Amy was, Amy Bounce with the Daily Cameras here. We obviously always want to talk to our newspaper. We want to put out information, try to get media coverage about the amazing things that are going on there, answer the hard questions when they come, try to make sure that we're, that we are always, you know, speaking to the public about the things that we're doing. And sometimes, there are opportunities to have advertising or paid media. Regardless of what we're doing, we want to try to make sure that we're as streamlined and sufficient as we can be. So, there's another principle called cope that a lot of news agencies use, where you hit a button and it sends it to multiple places. And that's really one of the things that we're trying to infuse the, into our consciousness. We want to make sure that regardless of if it's a newsletter or the website or emergency alerts, that those things are really easy to send out to our audience without having to do a lot of extra work. We've got, you know, just a few hands to get that work done. And so, a lot of our focus has been around crisis communication. The first year that I was here, that really was a big focus for me. We wanted to make sure that people were informed of the way that we were doing it, and then really make sure that our messaging was there for them. So, we changed a lot of the feedback that I got when I first was here, that it could take as much as, you know, thirty minutes for a message to go out that something was going on at school. So, we've developed an alert process. We worked with IT. We were having some issues with the website where it was taking up to fifteen, twenty minutes for the website to update with the emergency information. We had a little stoplight on there. Now, these alerts go up when we send out the alert through the school messenger. So, again, using that cope mentality, and it's, you know, pretty clear that there's something going on in the school district. Additionally, we're sending out messaging via email, phone calls, text messages. Those things are pre-formatted and translated already, so we don't have to do the, you know, the craziness of trying to figure out what our message is and send it out in those first moments of an emergency. And then, of course, we're still doing that work of trying to give updates to parents as quickly as we can. But it certainly has sped up our efforts and our ability to talk to people. One of my favorite things, I come from a television news background, and so, I believe that the best way to tell a story is through storytelling. First-person narrative is the strongest way to get across something. So, whether you're talking about the type of learning that we've got going on, this, this young girl is from one of our schools. She was doing a project-based learning exercise. And so, we did a video about her, or, you know, it could be about the budget process or whatnot. You want to make sure that you're gathering voices about the things where these impacts are had, trying to convey that. And it's really something that you're seeing now out there more and more. In fact, Coca-Cola had an article not too long ago that talked about, in their philosophy, they're replacing press releases with stories, because by getting out those stories, you're telling your audience about what's going on, and naturally, the media is attuned to the things that you're putting out there. You don't have to do a special package thing for them outside of maybe an advisory when you're asking them to go somewhere special. But this website that they have kind of really does that together. One of the things that we also realize is that we have a lot of folks in our community that we can work with. Our schools are doing great work, and they oftentimes will want to promote that. And so, if we work in a network in which they put out the things that are amazing, we support them and make sure that they kind of know what that should look like and what kind of avenues they can use, we can network with them to make sure that altogether, that message is stronger and amplified. If we put out something about the district, they can help share that. If they put out something about the school, we can help share that with a wider audience. So, it's really a partnership. And another thing that we're really focusing on right now is about data. I know that Superintendent Anderson has really talked a lot about being data-driven, and we believe that in communications is very important. In fact, one of the things I'm going to talk to you about is a new project that we've got coming up, and data is a key part of it. We want to know the analytics behind how people have been using our tools so that we can build a better tool the next time around. We don't want to just be, we can guess a lot of things, but, you know, we want to make sure that this is clear. So, as we've developed new tools, one of the things that we had this new year, this last year, was an email marketing tool that really gave us insight into how people are looking at our tool, how, if they're clicking on certain stories, the format. We can actually do testing on it to see if they like this version or that version better. We haven't so much gotten into that part yet, but we're definitely getting a lot more data that's going to drive that. We're doing that with social media. We're also actually looking at media and how we're, the sort of impression that people have of us out in the, in the public by tracking. You guys know that we do, like, news clips on a daily basis. We're actually tracking the demeanor of those stories so that we can give a report. And our, and I, in the near future, you'll be getting reports like this that will help to kind of give you an idea of how we're being presented out in the community. Okay. So, what we want to do moving forward is really meet stakeholders where they're at. I was kind of talking about the different types of technology, the different types of way people want things. We do know that a good majority of folks now have cellphones. And most of those cellphones, about seventy-seven percent, are smartphones. And when you look at, you know, populations in which they don't necessarily have a lot of money, that is oftentimes their access point into communication. So, it's something that we're definitely keeping in mind. So, one of the things that we're definitely trying to do is we look at moving forward in digital communication as being mobile first, really personalizing, making sure that you're not inundated with news and information that doesn't really matter to you, that if you're a middle school parent, or you've got kids at certain schools, you get information about that. If you're an employee, you're a bus driver, you may not care as much about, you know, certain things. We want to make sure everybody's informed to a certain level, but that we're really smart about the way, intentional about the way that we communicate things. And obviously, today, in this day and age, people need to have information right now. And so, especially with the emergency side of things, we want to make sure that we're available and that we're ready to go, so that we're, we're very easy to act, ready to act when something is going on. Okay. So, one of the big things that I wanted to give you guys a heads-up about is that we have, as you know, we've been working on a project that's moving towards a website. And so, we've been going through an RFP process, and we think we found a good tool for us to move forward. It will give us a modern, accessible design. One of the things that we're facing right now, we actually just learned about this, we had been facing OCR and about the website, and it had been dropped, and it's now back. And so, essentially, Office of Civil Rights is looking at how accessible our website is. Sorry, Kitty, use those acronyms a little bit too much. But, so, we want to make sure, and obviously, we have a commitment to accessibility and equity anyhow, but make sure that our website is really easy to use moving forward. We also want to make sure that it really represents the brand that we are. We're innovative. We've got teachers that are doing amazing work. Our website should look like that and should carry our message. And we really want to make sure that it's easy for our backend user and for the people that use the website on the outside to use. And so, that's one of the biggest focuses that we've been having on this. So, more news to come on that. We'll be likely talking about this in upcoming board meetings, but I just wanted to give you a heads-up that that's coming up. Any questions?
All right. That looks fabulous. Any questions, board members?
Right on.
Right on from Richard. Okay.
I don't have a question. I just want to say that after you and Rob visited Transition today, I got a call from a teacher saying, "We're so excited. Randy's going to do a special on us." So, that was cool to hear.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to comment on one of the newsletters. I noticed there's a section, I hope I didn't comment on this before, that includes community events that aren't necessarily just BVSD, but might be of interest to our community. And I think it's lovely that we can get those ideas out to our community and let our partners have a little bit of publicity for what they're doing. So, I appreciate that. Sam?
I really appreciate all your work, Randy, to modernize and to meet people where they are in terms of today's communication environment. Any preview as to what your data analysis is showing us about how we're communicating? Any big takeaways?
We don't, we know that people are definitely on digital now. Obviously, that's pretty straightforward. But as we look at our website, for some reason, we're trending downward, so we want to correct that. We want to make sure that people are getting to their information. They're bouncing at a very high rate right now, I would say, off the website. So, we want to make sure that they get to the right place. Our search is not working, as a good example. It's very cumbersome when you go in there to find something.
Sure is.
Navigation's not easy. So, I think all of our data is definitely pointing in the right directions on those things. But we actually are hoping to dig deeper as we go and have a better understanding about the different communities, too. We, we're actually forming a task force to talk with our schools that are impact, that have a lot of Spanish speakers, to try to make sure we have a better understanding of the translation needs that they have, ensuring that the right parts of our web, you know, that we have a website that's accessible to everyone in that way as well. So, we're hoping that our data will also give us some insight into that. And it's not just, just the empirical data from the website. We hope that some of that will be, you know, personal feedback that we can get from some of our community members as well.
I think all that is critically important. I would also just encourage the, the work you do and the work we all do as ambassadors to tell our story to the broader community. You know, it's critically important. We communicate to parents, to the various stakeholders, but, you know, two-thirds of our district doesn't have kids in the school, and is, perhaps we're becoming increasingly disconnected from our work. So, I, just as speaking as one board member, I certainly encourage all your efforts to prioritize telling our story to the community at large.
Actually, I really appreciate that, and that's been a conversation for us. It's much easier, obviously, when you have the contacts to talk to people on a daily basis. But we realize how important that is, especially in thanking them for the contributions that they've given and ensuring that they understand how their taxpayer dollars are being used. So, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Shelley? Thank you so much for the overview. You're doing great work, and I like how you're looking into how things could be even better. And it's really nice to have a presentation where we don't have to make a decision.
Not yet, anyway. Thank you.
Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, just echo my fellow board members' thanks. This is great. And I have just one quick question. Do you have a sense of the timing on the update of the, of our website? I think we all have shared the frustration of trying to find something on there. So, that's exciting news that you're working on that.
I will certainly share my frustration with trying to edit things on the website. Yeah, so, we're hoping that the contract will be with you guys in the next board meeting or two. And then, from there, the plan was to, this is a, we kind of had a couple of different options, the type of website we could go through. And this is a K-12 sort of prepped website, so, meaning that they, they already know our business. And this is a K-12 sort of prepped website, so meaning that they already know our business. They've already got, you know, sort of a format to it. We'll get to look at the, we'll get to design it and that kind of thing. But it's sort of like a pre-templated situation. So our plan is actually launched sometime in August, with a first phase of about a little less than twenty schools. Most of the district website will be part of that, and then follow it up, you know, within the next year after that with the majority of the rest of the schools.
Okay. It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Randy and the work that he's done. I've been here, gosh, seven, eight months, and Randy has spent a lot of time helping me, supporting me, communicating in ways that should make us all proud, as hard of a working communications officer as I've ever met, and just really appreciate his eye for continuous improvement. How can, how can, not only we share messages, but how can we listen better? How can we really get a sense of who this community is and how we can serve them better? And just so, I just wanted to thank you, Randy, for the job that you're doing and excellent presentation.
All right. Great. Our next item is a quick legislative update, if there is one. Any, do you have anything? It's okay if we skip it. It's going to be there every two weeks.
I can give a little bit of an update. I don't want to waste time. But on the full-day kindergarten, we were at the case conference and the governor spoke. And I think what the timeline is, is that we will wait until the March forecast because the revenue to support the full-day kindergarten funding, they'll have a better sense of what that looks like after the March revenue forecast. So it'll be, stay tuned, but I think that's still full speed ahead. And I think he's got bipartisan support. It sounds like there isn't much of an obstacle yet. I mean, we'll have to see what the March forecast looks like, but all signs are showing that the March forecast will be as strong as what the governor's hoping for, and he'll be able to move forward with the full-day kindergarten funding. As far as the mill levy issue, I think we're still waiting again on a bill. We've heard that the Joint Budget Committee is going to have a bill in the near future, but until we know what that bill looks like, we won't know much of the details on that. But it would have a financial impact. We talked a fair amount about that at the Audit Committee. So we'll stay tuned on that, as well as Speaker Becker's debreasing measure. We're still waiting to see if there's any language around that. The BEST bill, which this board has supported, made it through House Education, twelve to one, and it's on to finance. So that was really exciting. That provides additional revenue for BEST and also additional funding for charter schools that's more predictable and stable, and an increase in funding to the charter schools for their facility needs. And so I think the big, and the big question is whether there'll be a mid-year rescission, which will not impact Boulder as significantly as it might impact others. But when our assessed value came in higher, the state decided, "Great, we'll just put that money into the general fund." And instead, what's happening is that many districts are facing a pretty significant mid-year rescission, which are really challenging for, especially our rural school districts, to figure out how to take that money out of their budget halfway through the school year. So I know that they're working on trying to figure out whether they actually have to follow through on that mid-year rescission, or whether they can put that money back into school finance. So I think that's a pretty significant issue. So those are the issues that I know of currently in front of the legislature.
Any questions or comments, additions? All right. Everyone good for me to go with consent grouping, or do we need a break? Go ahead. Okay. So seven action items consent grouping, I'm going to read them off. Seven point one, personnel items. Seven point two, approval of minutes, January twenty-second, twenty nineteen, special meeting. Seven point three, approval of minutes, January twenty-second, twenty nineteen, regular meeting. Seven point four, acceptance of donation, community montessori. Seven point five, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Angovine Middle School. Seven point six, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Horizons K through eight charter school. Seven point seven, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Lafayette Elementary School. Seven point eight, amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded improvement work at Lewisville Elementary School. Seven point nine, appointment of delegate to Casby Special Assembly. Seven point ten, closeout to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded work at Broomfield High School. Seven point eleven, closeout to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded work at the Monarch High School. Seven point twelve, closeout to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond-funded work at the Monarch K through eight school. Seven point thirteen, Colorado preschool program, RFP award for community childcare center. All right. Do anyone want to pull any items? Okay. And do we have a motion to approve these items? By Kitty and a second by Shelley. Any questions or comments for discussion? All right. Laura, do you want to call the vote?
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yep.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, great. So then we can move along to nine, which is policy study. Okay, we've had a request for a five-minute break. I'm sorry. This is going to be a five-minute break, not a ten-minute break. It's a five-minute break. All right. All right. I think we can resume our meeting. So our next item is number nine, policy study. And it's item nine point one includes the study of policies, JS, student use of district technology, the Internet and electronic communications, JICJ and JICJ regulation, student use of cellphones and other personal technology devices, JRCB and JRCBR, privacy and protection of confidential student information, JLIB, student dismissal precautions, EFAR, BVSD, healthy food choices, JC and JCR, school attendance areas, JEA, compulsory attendance ages, and JEB, entrance age requirements. All right. So how do we want to tackle these? Which ones are we going to do first? Should we start with, Kitty wants to do the easy ones first? Yeah. So let's start with the technology, because we have some folks here who have been waiting around. Is that okay? All right. Looks like Sam Messier is going to come up. Andrew Moore? All right.
All right. I believe that we went over the policy, recommended policy changes with you the last time when we did the work session back on January twenty-second. So we shared some of the major changes to JS and the new policy, JICJ, with you at that time. What is new since that time that we talked is the addition of the JICJR, which would be a superintendent's regulation that would institute the away-for-a-day, essentially, policy at grades K through eight.
Okay. So that's JICJR?
JICJR. It's a very short policy. If you want me to read that to you, it would say, "At elementary and middle schools, students with cellphones or other personal technology devices must keep their personal technology devices turned off and away during school hours unless specifically directed to do otherwise by a school employee. Violation of this regulation may result in temporary confiscation of the personal technology device by school staff."
Okay. And so one, and I'll just make a comment about the process, regulations don't follow the same process as policy, just as a reminder and for the people who are watching. So we can place a, and this is a study session, so we're not voting on these tonight. That's the most important thing. But a regulation does not actually need to be voted on by the board. The board per our policy does need to be notified of any change in a regulation. And that's really important when we think about this, because when you're thinking about the difference between a policy and a regulation, the superintendent does, is able to change the regulation, but he does have to notify the board of when that happened so that the board has an opportunity to weigh in at that time in case it changes. So, and do you want to add anything to that?
Well, first of all, you know, just some overall overarching comments on our entire technology conversation this evening. And I just want to, just as many of our parents took the time to do during their comments, I want to thank Sam Messier, who has spent an incredible amount of time engaging around topics related to technology, engaging our parents, doing a really great job, being just a keen listener, and also listening to just our parents, staff, students. And so she's just done a great job. And with her leadership, I think that we've made some really significant gains in regards to getting to a place where we're much better than the first time I sat in this board room in last May. And we had a room filled with parents who had lots and lots of issues and concerns with where we're at. And while there may still be some outlying concerns that we'll continue to talk about, I would say that we're just in a much better place. In regards to this idea of K or JICJR, the regulation versus the policy, we felt like something along the lines of cellphone usage fell more within a regulation as opposed to sitting in a policy. And that's why we've kind of recommended that, because that would be something that would come to me as superintendent. For example, if schools weren't adopting or setting those expectations, we felt like that's set in a regulation, and that's why we added that. And certainly heard from not just parents, but talked to principals as well and talked to middle school principals. Most of them, if not all of them, are doing away-for-a-day at this point in time. And in consulting with them, felt like this was a solid regulation to put on the books. But happy to answer any questions that the board might have around all of these tech policies, and Sam is standing by, ready to, ready to help as well.
Okay. So that's one clarification about the away-for-a-day, which I think is fairly important. And I really appreciate, by the way, that you put in that regulation, a particular concern of mine. So board members, which one do you want to start with? Should we start with the cellphone? Yes.
So when I started reviewing these, JICJ didn't have a dash R after it. It just has JICJ indicating it's a policy. So is...
But there's a separate document.
But are we still talking about JICJ the policy, or there is no JICJ?
No, they're both now. They coexist.
Okay. Just making sure.
At least that's how I'm understanding it. It's all new to me, too.
Yeah, that's correct. So the regulation just goes above and beyond the policy by saying that we would do the away-for-a-day at K through eight.
All right. So do we want to start with that policy? Shall we start with the core policy, the JICJ, since we've just spoken about it? So board members, what comments do you have around, and I'm going to screw up some of these letters, JICJ, there we go.
Yeah. I have a question for you, Sam, because it came up earlier in one of the parents' comments about the hotspots, even if the cellphone's away-for-the-day, the entrepreneurs that are selling their hotspot or whatever, how can that be monitored?
So that actually would be covered in policy JS, which would prohibit the use of hotspots in our schools.
And I have a question. So the wearables will include the smartphones. They'll go in a locker.
Wearables would also...
I mean, the smartwatches.
Right. That would be the way that it's written now.
Okay. So that'll be just interesting to make, to see how that goes.
Yeah, it will. And I think, you know, an important clarification is that with the personal technology devices, that may very well include things that don't exist yet. You know, it's hard to write the language to keep up with the rapidly evolving field of technology.
Well, and I think that's an advantage of having some things in regulation, because we can move it and update it faster to try to keep up, if we can.
Yeah.
All right. So comments about the policy, JICJ? Any other comments? Whoops, Kitty.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. One, I agree with the parents who are saying, and it's at the very end of JS, that we need to strengthen that opt-out language.
Well, we're going with JICJ right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just the cellphone. And I'm sorry.
Sorry. I was...
Well, she's looking for hers.
Okay, Richard, while she's looking.
I think the regulation is cool in terms of the, you know, making sure that the cellphones are in the lockers or someplace else.
I did have something about that.
But for the purpose, you know, I have a concern regarding, what paragraph am I looking at? That's the one that, "Students may use PTDs as a designated tool for learning if authorized by the student's teacher. It is the student's responsibility to ensure that the PTD is turned off or placed in assignment mode during unauthorized times." It seems like that paragraph doesn't parallel, doesn't jive with the regulation, so I...
Is this policy really now only apply to high school? Because the regulation takes K eight devices out.
So if we were to take this language out of the policy, then we would not be covering that language for high school, because the regulation currently as written only covers K through eight.
Right. So this is a policy is written, and that paragraph applies to high school only.
To high school, that's correct.
Okay. So I'm going to go with Richard first.
Then if that's the case, then can we say that on the policy? For high school? Because it doesn't say that, I mean.
So I, well, I would caution against adding language about specific grade levels to the policy, and that maybe that's something that we address through the regulation. But I would defer to the board and to Dr. Anderson on that.
Let's get some more comments. Kitty?
This is what I meant to say. They're talking about use of cameras and recording capabilities, and I would really like to see us not allow any video recording that's not educational in its purpose. I mean, everybody is capable of being videotaped, or videotaped, recorded, doing things out in public. And we know that high school students do a lot of really stupid things, because they're high school students, and I don't think they should have to worry about being recorded while they're, you know, maybe goofing off in the hall or doing something, you know, that they don't want the rest of the world to see. So I would like to suggest that, to have it used only, like, if they're making a video to present. That, you know, that's educational. But I'd like to see it banned completely, other than them.
Okay. So I think if I get your intent with that language, and we can certainly work on that, is to add some language about any capture of video recording being for educational purposes only, prohibit it.
I guess the question I would have, and I'm going to lean on my sixteen years of experience working in schools. So as we think about and we talk about policies, right, and we set things in policies, would something like that be better to sit in a code of conduct? Right? So for example, if we set a policy and says, "Kids can't do that," what if they do that? Right? Like, I mean, I'm just trying to think about practice, right? And we're talking about the same things. And so whether it's in code of conduct, whether it's in regulation, or whether it's in policy, I think that it's important for us to think, you know, that the environment that we're trying to create, you know, through governance here as a team, where do things sit? And so I think that, you know, as we talk about ideas, I think that the job that we'll have in working with Melissa and our team is, with that idea, where does it sit? Is it a policy idea? Is it something, is it a student behavior issue in a code of conduct, or is it in a regulation?
And I don't care where it is. I just am interested in having kids not record one another. Mr. Jordan?
I want to get back to that paragraph with the student-teacher being the one that, we're placing a lot of responsibility in that student-teacher, and I think we need to call, there's, I don't see any congruence between that policy and the regulation. We've got to have some way that even a middle school teacher, for example, can see this policy and say, "Hey, well, you know, the policy tells me that I can go ahead and do it."
Okay, so is that feedback that we can give you, we're giving, so, and you can look at a way to address that?
So if I hear you clearly, Richard, it's, it's this idea of more clarity potentially in the regulation. Um, that would, would leave out some of the misinterpretation because something's sitting in policy, something else is sitting in regulation. And kind of connecting those two in a way that maybe um, is more clear? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yes and no. Uh, the, a policy is set to make sure that, that. Everybody works under the same policy, right? So if I see this policy and I'm a, and I'm a middle school teacher, and uh, there's this regulation here. Uh, that is for middle school or K eight only, that regulation is for only K eight. Uh, but I'm looking at the policy and I'm saying, well, you know, what's, what gives here? The policy's telling me one thing, the regulation is telling me another thing. And then we have, I don't know how many thousands of classrooms in Boulder Valley School District.
What I'm hearing you say is consistency and clarity in practice. Right, like, like, you know, and, and, and so, so um, whether it's the regulation, whether it's the policies. So there's cle- there's clarity around what it is, what it is that we're, we're trying to do.
Yeah, and I don't know why we can't add the high school in the policy. And I know you're advising against it, but I don't know why we can't add it, so that we're clear on that.
Well, I'm wondering, Richard, if it would help if we just moved that paragraph over to the regulation and specified that it's for high school.
Okay, uh, Kathy?
I'm just struggling with the fact that some students on I E Ps might need to use their P T Ds. And I don't think it's reasonable in some situations to put it on the student to remember to turn it off. And if you follow this strictly, then that student could be punished for not turning it off. And I think you're also gonna have, I know that I E Ps would trump this, but I think the language needs to be broad enough to, to reflect that. And that's my problem with the regulation is it's written so strictly that I don't think it gives any latitude for I E Ps or five oh fours. And so I think it needs to reflect that, and that's a K twelve, not just a high school issue.
So you're recommending adding that in the regulation, Kathy, about exemption for um, I E Ps and five oh fours, or are you recommending adding that to the policy?
Both.
To both?
Because I think, like I said, to say it's the student's responsibility ninety percent of the time, that's probably fair. But I can imagine circumstances where a student who's struggling with autism or some other disability might not remember without being prompted by a teacher. And I don't think, I, you wanna teach them to be responsible and make that be something that they learn, but I think it's written if without that kind of latitude.
So, and I'll make a comment on, I'm, I'm not just gonna go around, but on the paragraph about um. The, that P T Ds as a designated tool can be designated tool by the student's teacher. Sorry, I'm stumbling on the words. So not every kid has a cellphone or a smartphone. And so I just wanna make sure, and I have a daughter in high school. And they're starting to use cellphones for certain things from time to time, either as a clicker, as in a cahoot, um, at a sports, spring sports meeting. Um, the only way to do something with Chassa is through a text. And, and it's, it's interesting that, like, you're seeing where the smartphone piece is almost a requisite at this point. But it's not a required school supply for us. So if something requires a smartphone in a classroom, just to consider. How that works if a child doesn't have a smartphone and also, do we want something to be required with a smartphone? Um, I can't control Chassa, obviously, um, which is totally out of our. You know, so I don't know what the alternative for that particular registration was, but um, just that not everyone does have a smartphone. So I'm not into, until it's a required school supply, I'm not sure that that should be a learning device that's mandatory for education in a classroom.
Yeah, at this point, I mean, I'm not aware of any district functions for which a smartphone is actually required by students. I do know that there are high school activities, for example, um, I know a lot of our biology teachers have students film. Um, what's uh, going on under the microscope with their cellphone and include that in their lab reports. And what they do is make accommodations for those students who don't have a cellphone to get video footage from one of their peers.
It might be nice just to write something about that, that if, you know, if you do use a smartphone as an option in an instructional setting. That there'll be an option for a child who doesn't have a smartphone, if that makes sense. Okay.
Okay.
Shelley?
Um, I just think that's a really great point, Tina. Um, not only do some kids not have smartphones, but some parents don't allow their kids to have smartphones at school. So I think it's really important that we not have anything instructional required, for sure. Um, but first I just wanna say how great it is, I think, that, that you're recommending away for a day, K through eight. I, I think that's um, the right thing to do. I think it's very responsive. I think it's um, consistent with the research. Um, I, I really, really appreciate that. As far as high schools go, I, I just know having um, a couple of kids that have not been long out of high school. That that's where the worst problems exist. And so I feel like this policy could go farther. Um, in, you know, maybe having the caddies on the door or something where kids have to put their phones. You know, a, a way during class time, but they can still have in between classes and um, after school or whatever. I feel like, you know, I've heard too many stories from my own kids and from other parents where they're watching Netflix under the desk while their teachers are lecturing. Um, where they're gaming. I, I, I can't believe I've forgotten the name of that game, but the one they all play.
Fortnite?
Yeah, Fortnite. Um, you know, they're, they're still doing all that stuff in high school and this doesn't prevent it from happening. This doesn't change any of that. So I feel like we need to do something around how we're keeping our high school kids focused. And um, I know Robbie sent you that email about those slots that you can hang on your doors and you said they're expensive and. You know, I wasn't really saying we should buy from that vendor or anything. I was just saying that idea, you know, you can, you can buy those shoe things, you know? It, that costs a couple bucks. You don't have to go in for the big expensive way to do that, but I feel like that's a good compromise. Um, and I know that I finally ended up buying my son uh, on what turned out to be the happiest day of his life so far, a cellphone, when he turned seventeen. And I had to do that because his coach was texting him practice times. And he didn't know when he had to be at baseball practice because he didn't have a phone. So I had to do that, but um, I don't feel like parents should be forced into that, either by Chassa, by their coaches, by, you know, teachers. Or by anyone, because it's really up to the parents to decide, you know, when their kids should get the, the, those, you know, that hardware. So I have to say that the argument about, you know, oh my goodness, you need to get kids trained up on this. Uh, technology or they're, you know, they're gonna be behind in the world. I, I, I will tell you that within thirty minutes of having his phone, my son had learned every major, he had loaded every major league baseball alert system that was possible. Loaded every piece of music he wanted, downloaded every app he wanted. He knew exactly what to do with that phone. He knew exactly what to do with a computer when he got it. We're not holding our kids back by not giving them technology too late. We're, we're just not doing that. They're, they're just too aware of how it works. And what we really need to be doing, if you ask me, is not teaching our kids how to Google, because they all know how to Google. It's really teaching them about computer technology in computer lab classes. That's really where emphasis should be. Shouldn't be on searching on their computers. So I really, just back to cellphones, I think that we, isn't there something more we could do for high school? Is my question, and would this be, board be willing to do something more for high school? Yeah.
Uh, Donna?
I can't say it any better, but we, we've gotta consider all the devices too. When your wrist buzzes all the time and you're looking down to check a message that just came in. You, uh, those are real big distractions in the classroom. And I, I talked to a couple of teachers this week and asking, when we get to the other policy, I'll bring some of that up. But um, they were just saying the distraction that they're having, and this is at high school level. Of even when tests are given, seeing the glow under the desk and saying, you need to put that away. So tho- those are things that I would like to see it more specific to high school as well.
This is a, a question about uh, language in the regulation, where it says away during school hours. Is it the intent of that language to allow the individual schools to define a way? Cause a way could mean in the pocket, or it could mean in the locker, or, you know, and the temptation in the pocket is, you know, strong.
The intent is not for a way to mean the pocket. Uh, I think the, the intent is for a way to mean um, not in close proximity to the student. We tried some other language specifying lockers, but some of our elementary schools don't have lockers. And um, so specifying exactly what that location would be that is a way turned out to be a little bit difficult to capture. So we were trying to go for something simple that captured that concept.
So if we were to find a school that was defining a way as in the pocket, we would just tell them, hey, that's not what we meant and you gotta, you gotta, you know, put it further away?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay. You try that.
Okay, Kitty?
Yeah, so I had been thinking about this because my first thought was, why do we need kids to have cellphones at any age in, at school? But I recognize the people who actually have kids in school now, that um, there could be educational uses for them. But would it be possible to write the policy to say they can only be used for educational purposes? Like if they're filming the microscope? But it's, cause some of the research I looked at even looked at college students and how their um, achievement was better. When they didn't have their cellphones with them. And we all know how distractible kids are. It's, you know, it's like saying squirrel to a dog, you know, all of a sudden they're looking somewhere. And is that too much? I mean, what do you all think? Do you think it's too much?
I think in high school it is. In middle school, if I needed to get to my daughter, the secretary could get to her. But like if I had to set up a doctor's appointment before she, after she left for school, I don't have any way to tell her, Kitty. Because they won't do it at a high school. They don't have it set up. So she'll look at her break and that's not educational. So I don't have a problem during class, but high schools are not set up to get messages to their two thousand kids. Um, and so I think during, you know, a lunch, she knows she can't use it during class, but if she's waiting for a text from me to go to the doctor. She needs her phone. And that, I just think middle schools, it never was a problem because I could send a note down. Right, and say you need to come to the front office at ten twenty to go to the doctor, but it doesn't work that way in high school.
So I'll point out in the policy, it says that students may use P T Ds as a designated tool for learning if authorized by the teacher. And otherwise it needs to be turned off or placed in silent mode. Um, during unauthorized times. And it also says that P T Ds shall not engage and promote or facilitate any other conduct. That violates the student code of conduct, board policies, regulations, or state or federal law. I'm wondering if, you know, I, I don't know what the sense is at the high school level of how much of an issue cellphones are with distraction. But I feel like this policy does allow for teachers and principals to even do away for a day if they want it. They could do it in their classroom. And I think they're already doing it in certain classrooms at high school, from what I understand. Um, that there are high schools that don't allow them at all. I, is there a way through? Though that we could address these concerns through the code of conduct? Because the policy says that they're not supposed to be using the cellphones or playing Fortnite. It's clear. But I think now we have an enforcement issue and it's hard to enforce when you have thirty-six kids in a classroom. So what, how do we, how do we get to a place where we can feel better that the general idea is that you're not using a cellphone unless it's for an educational purpose?
So here's what I've heard in, in speaking with our principals. Middle school principals away for the day, thrilled with the results. High school principals, the thought and idea of having to try to manage and confiscate. And give consequences to every child using a cellphone, um, very overwhelming. We don't have the manpower in schools. If that were, were really the, the desire, we'd probably have to beef up administration to just begin to. To begin to try to tackle that. And, and again, speaking from experience. Now, to Shelley's point, there are best practices, right, and this idea of, a- a- and we have teachers that are doing a great job of this. And maybe the, maybe through an administrative bulletin, or, or through, or through training, um, through supports. We can start to scale those best practices and ideas um, at, at high school. The high school principals that I've spoken to um, cringe when you start to talk about banning cellphones at high school. Um, just from the sheer management. And the other piece is, again, speaking from experience, is the relationships with kids you end up damaging. Um, I've, I've, I spent a lot of years trying to take cellphones away from kids. Um, and even the best, most respectful kids, they're not gonna give you the phone. So, so then you get into a, you get into a, an issue, right? Well, then it's not about the cellphone. It's in subordination. You get escalation. You, you start talking about increased discipline numbers. These, the, I mean, these issues can compound, right? Now, that's not to say that there aren't best practices and things that we can do. But I think that we just have to tread lightly on this idea of banning cellphones in high schools, only because I worry about the ability to enforce. And then the negative consequences of what happens when you try to do that.
So, um, Rob, I, I agree with you. I think it's banning in high school is not a good idea. But do you think that, honestly, I can't, I can't imagine too many students not um, acquiescing to a teacher who says. Please hang your phone on the door when you walk in. You get to have it on the way out.
Yeah, yeah, that's different than give me your phone. You're, you're, you're not supposed to have it. I'll give it back to you when, whenever.
And also, it's, it's there if you wanna do recording of plants or algae or something. It's right there in the door. You can pull it out and use it. Um, so it doesn't take away that instructional possibility. So I, I don't know. I feel like that's a, a compromise.
I, I, I guess the question is where does that, where does a practice like that, cause that's a practice? Right, where does that sit? Does that sit in, in direction from superintendent? Um, does that sit in a regulation? Does that sit in a policy? Again, with this idea that as we're talking about where we wanna land, um, you know, we, we can certainly take that back and kinda consider where we think that, that's appropriate. And, and bring that back to the board with this idea of, of, of having some type of guidance for high school teachers around how they can, how they can best manage this.
So at this point, so it sounds like we've heard some feedback, including around clarifying the high school usage versus the K through eight. The away from the day sounds like that's gonna work well. It's already working well. And then thinking about language to address an overall concern of cellphone usage at the high school level without banning a cellphone. Is that capturing more or less? And, and pointing out the I D E A and five oh four exceptions? Okay, so we're on study, so we're gonna look at this again. Um, and then I would suggest that we move on to policy uh, J R C B. Which is the privacy and protection of confidential student information, if that's okay with everyone.
Point, point of clarification, do you want us to bring this back for second read or action?
Everyone, second read or action? Do, do you have a timeline on this?
Um, well, I've gotta check with Sam.
So, so we would, our, our plan would have been to bring it back to you for action um, at the next board meeting. Uh, but we could certainly include a draft of the revisions in news and notes.
I just wanna make sure the board, the entire board is comfortable. We've worked so long and so hard to try to get this right. Wanna be sensitive to our parents that have been involved. I wanna be sensitive to our staff that's been involved. With the idea that, you know, this isn't really, you know, we're not in a place to stand this up right away. Um, a, a second read might just give everybody an opportunity to say, you know what, we've, you've heard us, this is where we're at, thumbs up, and then we can move to action.
I, it sounds fine with me. Alright. Uh, privacy and protection of confidential student information. Anyone wanna?
So the, the changes to that are very small and technical. On the policy side, it's just removing some language that was already implemented. Um, the CASB model hasn't changed since it was adopted by the board um, a year ago. And then the regulation is just spelling out an acronym. Those are the only changes.
Okay, and just out of curiosity, with a policy like this, it's, it's pretty long. How is ours, how are our staff and teachers trained on it? How do we, how do we, how does that communication flow to the people who are handling technology or student information?
So we, we do have a, a student data privacy course that all staff who handle um, student data have to complete. So it's a course that's delivered online and they have to pass a quiz certifying that they understood. Um, the policy and the laws regarding student da- data privacy.
Okay, thank you. Alright, questions or comments, board members, on this policy? Shelley?
Yeah, so um. We approved this policy because it was a CASB policy um, in two thousand seventeen. Um, and I felt like it was very inadequate then, and I still feel like it's inadequate now. And um, you, those of you who are on the board may recall that um. Um, I went to the CASB presentation where they presented this and the room was full and most people in the room were in opposition to this policy. And yet we, we adopted it um, sort of as is. So I just wanna, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna re-present the policy that I recommended at the time. Because that didn't work very well, so I'm just gonna make a couple of comments here and maybe um, maybe we could make some minor revisions if the board agrees. But I'd just like to say. But I'd just like to say, first of all, that it's a big conversation in Washington about rewriting FERPA because FERPA is inadequate, the law is inadequate. And so to say that we're in compliance with FERPA is really not saying much. And most people that understand this issue would, would agree with that, I think. So I think for now it's fine, but everyone should know that they're going to be rewriting FERPA, and we're going to have to rewrite probably some of this policy as a result when that happens. So that's on, that references on page one. Then on page two, you know, it's very unclear to some parents who've asked this question of the district and parents actually all over the country who've asked this question, is exactly which school officials, which is in the, it's in the second paragraph under access, collection, and sharing with the district, within the district. You'll see, District Employees Shall Ensure That Confidential Information And Student Education Records Is Disclosed Within The District Only To Officials. Okay, well, that, that one's okay. But when you're talking about school officials outside of the district, it's very unclear what information is being shared with them and what they have access to. And that's, I guess, in the next paragraph, so sorry about that. In the next section, I mean. So that's what happened in back in 2011. Obama changed the, FERPA, changed FERPA to include school officials. And those became third parties that had, have now access to our children's information. And so that, that was, FERPA was weakened dramatically back then and has not been repaired. And so that is why people all across the country are upset right now with their not being strong enough laws about student data privacy. But the thing I really don't like about this policy, and have never liked about it, is that organizations outside the district include school service on-demand providers and school service contract providers. Those are two very different things. We have contracts with certain people, and we have privacy addendums in those contracts, and we can control what information is shared. On-demand providers, there are none of those restrictions. There, where are the provisions that require on-demand providers to safeguard the privacy and security of personal, personally identified information? So what are the penalties for non-compliance? And let me just tell you who an on-demand provider is. It's Google. So every time your kid uses G Suite for education, they're just, they're clicking through, like, just like when you get an app on your phone and you have to click, I agree, and there's 42 pages of stuff that you don't read before you click, I agree. That's how Google works in this district, and that's how Google works across every district in the United States. They're an on-demand provider, and none of this privacy law applies to them. I feel like we need to include on-demand providers in this policy. So that's, that's something that, to me, this policy really is, doesn't even hit 5% of the problem, the, the way it is written. It, it, it excludes, it excludes on-demand providers. Yeah, this policy does.
So can, can we take a pause there? And Rob, what, did you guys discuss this? Did you talk about this? Because it's been brought up before?
No.
Okay.
No, I think that there was, at, our team, our team looked at it. What was, what was the conversation around this, Melissa? Not in depth like this. No.
So I, I went to some of the on-demand providers that this district and other districts contract with. And if you read their privacy policies, you would be terrified. They can do whatever they want with your students' information once they get it. And this is not just this district's problem. This is a problem across the country. But I feel like we should do, we know about it, there's, we should address it.
So I guess my question to Andrew would be, would the recourse then to just not do business with on-demand providers? I mean, because, you know, we wouldn't have the leverage to, to, to have these folks agree to terms that were different than that. Is that accurate?
Right.
You'd have to set up a contractual arrangement with them.
If, if they would enter a contract with us under those terms.
Or not do business with them.
So, so then the question is, if you're thinking about eliminating on-demand providers, what impact does that have on our system?
Yeah, I think these are all great questions. I think Shelley, you're absolutely right. This is language out of the state law. So when the state passed the student data privacy law, this was a requirement to have a policy from the board, and the language we're seeing here is, is basically dictated by that law. To answer your question, Dr. Anderson, we would have numerous applications that we would have to go and try to negotiate some kind of agreement with them. And they're not likely to negotiate with us. Google is interesting. It's the biggest click-through agreement that I've ever seen. Every school district does that, click-through with them. They also have, you know, signed the student data privacy pledge. They've done other things. I'm not going to stand up here and defend Google in any way, but it is a dilemma.
Yeah, I mean, Google could sign a contract with us if they wanted our business. They absolutely could do that. They don't want to, but, but if we ask them to, they could. And if they wouldn't, we, there are other options. We don't have to use Google. And, and by the way, you know, Google is being sued all over the world for their lack of protection of, of data privacy. So it's, it's not like we can trust them. You know, clearly no one can. And, and they're, I think their latest fine was $56 million from Germany for doing exactly this kind of thing. It's just a matter of time before somebody in America stands up and says, this is not okay.
Did you say 56 million? I think we should do that.
Yeah. Really, I'm going to pay for that air conditioning. So anyway, I, I just leave that out there, that we are not protected with this privacy bill. Our students' data is not protected. And then another concern I have is the, under Privacy and Security Standards on page two, it says, the security of student education records maintained by the district is a high priority. The district shall maintain an authentication and authorization process to track and periodically audit the security and safeguarding of student education records. And I, I just am curious what that process is.
We have just recently completed a very thorough, in-depth audit, security audit of numerous systems, including human systems. That included Infinite Campus. So the probing of their systems to make sure that you couldn't get in from the outside. We do have that report. I'd prefer not to share it in the public, but in maybe an executive session, if you'd like to see some of the output, I'd be happy to arrange that.
That would be great. Thank you. So, and I, I just, you know, before it escapes my mind, we used to contract with Google before the law was passed in 2016.
We did not. We have never had a actual contract with Google. We basically do what every other district is, and they have a set of terms and conditions. And if you accept that, then you have access to their software. And that is what we've done since day one. We've been on Google as a district now getting close to eight years. And that includes email, calendar, docs, presentations. You know, simple things like, I think Randy's presentation earlier tonight was a Google slides.
Well, maybe it's just a, you know, difference in terms. But terms and conditions are somewhat of a contract. Now we don't even do that. We have a click-through agreement.
Which includes the terms and conditions, but you're right, we, we don't negotiate those.
Right, right. So then my next question was under staff training, just how often, I, I think you just talked about staff training, but how often does that occur?
So we're required as employees to take that, the detailed, basically, training. It's over 30 minutes. And then there's a refresher, and we're working with Randy right now to get that ready for next year. It'll be one of the many courses that every employee is required to take when the new school year starts. It'll be condensed down, though, much smaller, less time commitment than what you have to do when you go through the first course.
Okay. Then my last comment was just on, as you're nearing the end of the policy, we had added very specific language last time that's been deleted this time. And I'd just like to call that out. You'll see it in the red line document. And it went to the superintendent annually reviewing this policy and accompanying regulations. And then it had to evaluate the district's practice with respect to, one, vetting school service on-demand providers. And, two, the feasibility of parents and guardians opting in or out of data sharing, which we don't have. And the use of Chrome Sync, which we've talked about multiple times here. That the idea was that we couldn't get to resolution on that the last time we, we, we put this in, we, we voted on this policy. And so we asked the superintendent to look into those things. And then we agreed to approve the policy with that in there. Now we're taking it out. So that would say you're not looking at any of those things, when in fact, those things were very, very important to our parent body at the time. So I, it, maybe there's a way of doing this without putting it in policy, and I would be fine with that. But I think there needs to be some comfort that those things are being looked at.
It's, it's good to know that background.
Okay, Donna, did you have a comment?
No, she answered.
Okay, dope. Any other comments on student data privacy policy? Kitty?
I didn't have a specific comment, but I, and now I remember last year, it was shortly after Donna and I joined the board, and we were down to the wire of being required by law to pass this. And I remember at the time, you had all these different concerns. And I thought we had talked about revisiting it and bringing up those concerns to make it a more robust policy. And I would cer, I would be interested in doing that. And I would certainly not put myself out as anybody who knows anything about it. But I would like us to have the most robust policy that we could have.
Okay. Feedback? Other comments? No, that's it? Okay. So I think you heard the feedback on this policy. And it will come back.
It might take us a minute to kind of go through some of these things. Yes, no, no, I think that, that between Andrew, Sam, and I, I think we've heard your direction, you know, Shelley pointing out, you know, why that piece was still in there, I think is important for us to consider. And, and then just the implications, if there are actions that the board would want to direct us to take on some of these things. I think there are significant financial implications that we'd have to consider as well.
Okay. Any questions on the regulation attached to this policy? JRCB hyphen R.
Which one, Sam?
The regulation, so same four letters with a dash R at the end. It's the penultimate one on the list on the board docs. Anything on that one? All right. So, and then I think, let's see, the last one we have is JS. Is that right? Is that our last technology one? Sam?
It is. I definitely need my glasses for this one.
Yeah, these come so small on the board docs. You can't read anything.
It's because of the red line, they have to shrink it.
Oh, that is what it is. So this is Student Use of District Technology, the Internet and Electronic Communications?
That's correct. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a few.
All right, Shelley, do you want to start?
Kitty, I think she had her hand up.
Oh, sorry, Kitty. Sorry.
Well, now I'll say what I've said out of order, is that I do believe we need to strengthen the opt-out language to not say, we'll consider. Where is it? At the very bottom?
Page five, bottom.
Yeah, consider helping them, but that we will, let's see. Where is it? Yeah, we will take reasonable or make reasonable accommodations or ensure there are reasonable accommodations, not just consider. Because that's pretty weak.
Where are you, Kitty?
We are on page five, the red sentence, two lines up from the bottom. What is, how it reads is, should a parent or guardian have concerns about the access to technology, the district will consider a reasonable accommodations for the students within the educational environment. And that's not very reassuring for parents who do not want their kids to be using technology. So how do we make sure that if they don't want their kids on computers, that they're going to get the same education without it?
So I would look to the board for some guidance on exactly how you want to word that. I think that it would be the district's approach to just be cautious about how we word any guarantees of providing accommodations, with accommodations being individual in nature. That we would want to address those to a specific parent's desires or requests regarding technology.
But isn't that already limited by the reasonable accommodations?
Melissa, I might look to you for some guidance on this one.
Right, we, we had some discussion about this. It's, it's hard to be prescriptive in a policy about what a reasonable accommodation would look like.
But if we said, or even if we just took out consider and say, we'll make reasonable accommodations, would that be too specific?
So Shelley, then Donna. And Donna, go ahead.
I made a, I made a note on that exact sentence, Kitty, and I agree with you. But in this, you're probably all going to say it's a little too restrictive. But my note, and I drew an arrow from that sentence to, the district will block access to social media sites and block access to sites that contain pornographic obscene or other sexual oriented material. You guys are probably going to think that's too restrictive. But I, I think to be really specific is important.
Mine have two topics going on here. So Kitty's talking, yeah. No, Kitty's talking about accommodations for students who want to opt out of using technology. So we'll get to there. So hold that, we heard you, we, hold that thought. Okay, Shelley?
So I would suggest that district will make reasonable accommodations for instruction, including but not limited to providing a pen and pen paper alternative to online assignments and assessments.
I, why don't we give feedback instead of wordsmithing?
Well, she said she needed help with the language.
Okay. Let's, yeah, so can we take, can we give that feedback in terms of?
We can. We can take the feedback. We want to, you know, we want for the policy to have the strength that the board is looking for, but also give staff the ability, with the idea that, you know, there's, there's recourse if a school, i- if, if a parent's needs are, are not being met at a school, right? Like, there's, there's chain of command, there's recourse in regards to that. And, and so, you know, in balancing, you know, the guarantees that we're, we're providing in policy, right, and, and that we're enacting that, you know, staff's enacting that on the, on the, on the, on the direction from the board through the policy. What I'm hearing you say is, consider reasonable accommodations, doesn't feel strong enough for you. What you're hearing staff say is, we don't want to be too prescriptive because then it, it, it may, it may put us in a position where it, it's limiting to, in regards to what we're able to do. And so trying to find that sweet spot, probably not going to do that right this second. But I think that's the feedback that we can take back. Is, am I hearing that right?
And I can see a parent looking that, looking at that and thinking, oh, well, they'll think about it, but then they say no.
I, I'd want to give staff as much flexibility as we can in the policy. And to your point, Rob, is if a parent feels like that's not being reasonable, they have a chain of command that they can take it up. So I think it's better to be flexible in the policy and give staff, because you can, we, we're trying to anticipate as many different problems, and I think it's better to make the policy a little more flexible.
And I would say, as we think about and consider these types of accommodations, opting out some of these other things, that we're going to have to provide guidance to schools and work through them and what that looks like, right? And so, you know, I, I would hate to think that we would ever get into a situation where a parent is, is, is feeling like, you know, that there, that there aren't being reasonable accommodations, and somebody says, well, that's what the board policy says, so. You know, I, I don't, I don't, that, that wouldn't be, I would say, the direction that we would, that, that my expectation would be of superintendent. Nor do I think that from our staff, that's the approach that they take.
Richard?
No, I was going to say, every policy has regulations, right?
Well, no, not every policy, no. Well, no, not every policy, no.
But, this one could have a regulation behind it, couldn't it?
It could.
And the regulation could include some of that stuff that we're talking about, right?
Okay. There's an idea? Okay. All right, Shelley?
Yeah, I just so appreciate you saying that, Rob, that, you know, the district wants to work with parents, you know, whenever these kinds of concerns arise, and I know that you wholeheartedly mean that. I feel like sometimes with 56 schools, and a, a parent might go to a teacher, and your willingness to, you know, deal with a parent's concerns may not filter down to every teacher. So, I guess that's your job to do that, to make sure it does filter down. But, I, I also think that it's worth considering putting in a pen and pa- paper alternative in the policy, just to make sure that it's covered. If, if indeed, we decide not to do that, then I would hope that that's something that would, would filter down. But, I think that's what parents are asking. Do, we have to do everything on the computer? Can some assignments not be online? If we don't want to do it online, can we do it the old-fashioned way? And, and how do we make sure that that's a possibility for them, is the question, you know?
Okay. Oh, Sam?
Because I do want to respond to that question, and the parent who said that exact thing, that, you know, I'm going to opt for leaving the Chromebook at school, but I'm concerned that there will be an assignment given, that, you know, I'd like to be able to answer that question to parent satisfaction, but I also would like to hear from the teachers, you know, on how that would work. Because I don't know if every assignment, if that would be possible, or if the pen and paper alternative would be something that really is just, you know, something, because we have to give that option. So, what's best instructional practice? I think we need to, you know, get some more ideas on this one from, from staff.
And this, this does turn out to be a tricky one to explore, so there are, are certain things that absolutely, you could do a pen and paper option, right? If the assignment is to write an essay, there could be a pen and paper option for that. If the assignment is to, if you're taking an engineering class and the assignment is to use AutoCAD to design something, I'm not sure there's a pen and paper alternative to that. I mean, I know that's an extreme example, I don't know that, you know, that's not an example that would come up every day. But, I just put that out there as one of those things that would, there are things that are sometimes difficult to accommodate for in that way.
Donna?
Is AutoCAD on a Chromebook?
Um, it can be through remote desktop. So, the Chromebook can run remote desktop, it can run a full computer system.
I did talk to a few teachers, and, and this is, I know it's anecdotal, but their thought, and this was at high school level, was that the Chromebooks ought to stay in the school, because oftentimes kiddos bring it uncharged, or don't take care of it, or it gets broken, or left behind. So, I do think we have to think about alternatives to, and most kids have a device at home, I'm not saying all kids do, and for the kids that don't, they could take those home, but there's other things we've got to think about as far as the technology use and the homework assignments.
Okay, Kathy?
Just, Sam, to your point about writing an essay, I know that, at least in my limited experience, teachers in LA use Google Docs, and they have peer review, and so, I mean, you could probably figure a workaround around that, but I, I think leaving it up to the teachers and getting feedback and keeping this policy as flexible as we can allows those kinds of conversations to go, and I don't want to be too prescriptive.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think in, I think our teachers would appreciate that. I've heard some feedback from some teachers that are concerned about the opt-out. I do, however, believe that our teachers are, and these come from my conversations with Terry Mulford and Patty Delgado and BBEA, that our teachers are really committed to trying to ensure that every kid has access to learning, and they get that there are some, some students for whom there's a concern about those students having access to technology in the classroom. Maybe it's an addiction to technology that causes a problem for them in the classroom environment. And, you know, I really believe that our teachers are wholeheartedly committed to making accommodations for our students in a way that doesn't ostracize them, that doesn't make them feel held out as a, a bad example.
Okay. Yep.
Um, I, I think, Sam, that it's, it's not totally optional that the district do that. I believe there have been lawsuits about that. So, it might be something to look into. You might check the Electronic Frontier Foundations. They represent parents in these types of lawsuits, and so, I think we should be covered with an alternative in the event that something like that could happen.
Okay, what other, I have a question. When we talk about filtering content, does that include advertisements?
Yeah, so, I, I, adverti- advertisements would be one type of media that we could choose to filter. And our general guidance on this, and again, we'll do whatever the board directs us to do in this policy, but our recommendation would be that we don't make specific, we don't call out specific things that we're going to filter in this policy, in terms of things like advertising, or social media, or gaming, but that that's something that we revisit on an annual basis in a way that's a little bit more agile and responsive to changing needs in technology than policy can be.
So, right now, do we filter out advertising?
We do not.
And why not?
So, that is a great question. So, we have been exploring some different options for how you block advertising. There are some ad blockers that can be installed on the Chromebooks, and we can absolutely give parents information about how to install some of those free ad blockers. There are some consequences for how the machine runs, and they're not perfect. So, I would say that that's a piece that we're trying to explore, to figure out how to do more effectively and efficiently. There's not a great solution to it right now, is my understanding from my conversations.
Because I do, I do think some of the Google ads are, are really big. I was surprised.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and I get that there's significant concerns about our kids being exposed to marketing and advertising in the educational environment.
Do you have a question on that?
Did you want to jump in?
Yeah, just, I want to be clear that in our Google environment, there aren't ads in the Google environment. Now, if you go out to CNN, you will get ads that, that come up. And we could, can turn on additional filtering to stop that, but then, there are other sites like Forbes, for example, that will, um, when they detect the pop-up blockers, then they get upset the other way, because that's how they, they pay for their services. Once again, I'm not here to advocate for one way or the other. To Sam's point, the solutions aren't perfect. Ublock Origin is a Chrome extension that's available. We put that in our FAQs to parents, so if the parents want to install that, they can. And it's, I would say it's probably about seventy, eighty percent effective. I've been running it myself.
Why would, wouldn't we just?
Kathy, first, actually.
I was just wondering if we couldn't run a pilot to see, I mean, it seems like it's a risk, I mean, we're just trying to weigh it and try running the ad blocking and see if it's so significant that people can't possibly use it, because I, I share, I think Tina and the rest of the board's concerns. Like I said, I walk into a classroom, and they had the weather, and then, they had all these ads on the side, and, and I, I would like to see us try to fix the commercial piece to this as much as we can, and if we just run a pilot or do something so that we have more information about what the significant drawbacks are, if there are any of blocking the ads.
Can Rob go first, Shelley?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would say, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing direction from the board around this, investigate some ways where you can reduce, eliminate ads. You know, the, the question that I think that we'll have to consider is, when you do that, what is the actual sacrifice on the usability of the machine, right? Chromebooks have limitations, right? The good thing about Chromebooks is they're affordable, right? And we're able to, to, to purchase them in bulk, to provide the access that, that folks would want, but they're not, they're not full high, they're not high-end PCs, right? And so, what you might be able to do on the computers that are around this table, if you're not on Chromebooks.
On Chromebooks.
You're on Chromebooks, so...
You gave them to us.
Hopefully, you don't have a lot of ads in board docs, hopefully, they won't have to deal with that.
No, they're pretty boring.
We can try to tighten that up. But, in, in any event, and I think that, and you know, so, so it's, you know, I come back to, to, as we think about these solutions, happy to investigate. I think Andrew and his team, Sam, they've been wonderful, and, and we've been continuing to press on things where, you know, there may be some worries, well, let's try, let's see what happens. But, but you could get to a point where you lock these things down so much that their usability declines to a point where, you know, and, and to buy your way out of that is very expensive. So, just, not to say that, ju- just to put that point on the table, but I, but we can certainly go back and consider what we could do in regards to advertising.
I think I'm hearing a recommendation that we pilot that.
I, I think that you're hearing feedback that there's concern around advertising, and we trust you in good faith to look at that.
Yeah.
And we appreciate it.
Though, we, we have the Go Guardian tool that is ready to go for classroom management. That is also another plugin that runs on the Chromebook, and we're going to start a pilot at Angivine next week for filtering at home. And so, that's another piece of that that runs on the Chromebook. So, we'll get through that, and then, once we get those settled down, I think the advertising will be the next thing we'll, we'll take the look at.
So, on this, Richard?
Just very quickly. So, you're working with parents, you know, when, when we make these, when we give you some feedback? Would you go back and work with parents in terms of the advertising stuff, in terms of getting feedback from them also, or how does that work?
In, in terms of adding that to the policy specifically?
Not adding family engagement, well, maybe we should add parental engagement in there, but I, I wasn't thinking about that. I was thinking more along the line that, would you go back to a parent group, or what is it called, the, the Technology Advisory Council? And run that through them too, and see how, get feedback from them?
It would be my strong recommendation that whenever we make some considerations about what we filter, that we get input from both parents and from staff. Ideally, getting input from students is hopeful as well.
So, so you would do that, is that?
Um, in fact, I do think we call that out in the process, in the policy, is that we recommend that we establish a process that happens at least on an annual basis, and that we strongly recommend that parent and staff feedback be included in that process. I do think that that is very important in making those decisions about filtering. There's often not consensus about what should be filtered and what shouldn't, and sometimes different groups of stakeholders have different opinions about where our filters should be set, so I think engaging those different groups of stakeholders in the conversation is crucial.
Okay, Donna?
Andrew, the Go Guardian, the Chromebooks that are scheduled kind of like to be rolled out, do they have the Go Guardian on them? And what about the ones that are already out?
Yeah, great question. So, for the, the WonderWeb schools that are coming up March first, Go Guardian will be deployed on all of those devices. It will also be deployed on all the pilot schools that helped us figure out the right tool for classroom management. In August, when we all come back to school, it will be deployed on every student Chromebook. So, it's just a matter of resources to be able to, to train the teachers on how to use it, to, you know, get the, the whole support process. We expect to get calls in IT. We expect maybe even after-hours calls, when we do the filtering at home, and so, there's a ramp-up that we're working on right now, on how to do that within our existing staffing model that we have.
Can you describe what the filtering at home is? Just what the, what the outcome is of that?
Yeah, so, it's ongoing right now, the investigation. The good news is, and I want to thank you all for funding the classroom management software, that opened the door for us to do a lot of these safety, security things. Go Guardian has a component for filtering at home. And so, we are loo- we, the investigation is underway. We have it working, but we don't want to tell Sam and company we're ready to go until we can pilot it, you know, in-home, in a few students, just to make sure we don't break something else.
So, what will it filter at home?
Um, so, it will be a filter similar to the filter we have here on-site. It is a different filter manufactured by Go Guardian. It'll filter all the things where we're required to be filtered through FERPA, but it'll also filter any additional things that we have added to our filter. So, it'll be very similar to what it's like being at school. Ironically, when those Chromebooks are at school, they'll get double-filtered. They'll come through our main filter, and then, they'll get filtered again at the Chromebook level.
And this occurs on a Chromebook that's issued by the district? Does it, the filtering occur if a child signs in on a non-district computer through their Google account that's BVSC?
Yes. So, if you're in a Chrome browser on a Mac at home...
It'll filter.
It'll filter, because it's, it's filtering at the browser level. Now, if you're on a Mac at home, and you go over to Safari, then it won't filter.
Right, they use their other user and get whatever they want.
Whatever the parents have set up for filtering.
Right.
Yeah, this will be the first time that we're actually doing something in the student's home that is restrictive in, in some way, which, you know, personally, I think that's a good thing for us to do.
All right. Other questions and comments, board members on this? Shelley?
Yeah, on page two, I'm just wondering if we have an inconsistency, because about halfway, under unauthorized and unacceptable uses, we talk about how no student shall access anything that promotes violence, or advocates destruction of property. But, we've heard many, many times from people that kids can access first shooter games, type games. So, I'm wondering what kinds of, like nuanced filtering can go on with gaming, so that if we are going to allow gaming, which I'm not sure why we would, but if we are going to, and we're trying to meet this policy, how can we rule out games where there is actually violence included in those games?
So, I mean, I think filters are, no filtering system is absolutely perfect, and no filtering system keeps everything out. I think the point of this particular language is actually to call out that whether a student can access it or not, purposefully accessing that information is against policy. So, it's really saying, in terms of student behavior, students should not be trying to access that information.
Even though we're allowing it by not filtering?
Well, our, our filters, we definitely would be wanting to block things that involve promotion of violence, right? But, our filters may not always catch a hundred percent of those things, and this would prevent students from seeking it out.
Right, but that is something we are seeking to do in high school, is block those kind of games?
Um, I, I would have to ask Andrew on our, our specific filter settings, because that is a little bit more complicated and detailed.
So, we block gaming up through K eight. Gaming, the category, is open for high school. However, we can go in and block specific games if they've been reported to us for being inappropriate. You know, it's interesting, we've had this policy, we get more requests to unblock things than we get to block them. So, you know, if, if there is a game that a parent finds that is violent, absolutely, you know, call us, seven-two-oh-five-six-one-help, that'll ring through, we can get, get those things blocked.
So, Andrew, there's, there's not a, there's not a subcategory in blocking gaming, to Shelley's point, that would let you kind of block further its gaming or not, or then you have to go through and find the specific sites and block them one by one?
So, that's kind of a yes and no. There are, there are other levels of filtering that may block the game already, because they've triggered another thing, like games around pornography, for example, should get blocked. So, that's why I put it out there, that if somebody is getting to one of these games that we know is violent, then get it to me, and we'll figure it out, and we'll, we'll get it blocked. We also communicate back to our filtering company, because there's things that come up all the time, and the filtering company will review our recommendation, and they'll re-categorize things, so that they do get blocked for basically everybody at that point.
Tina?
Could you block all games, and then, only open up the ones that are appropriate or requested?
Yeah, so, that's called whitelisting, and with the right amount of staff to do that, yes. We haven't gone down that path at this point, but we could certainly explore it. The problem is, the internet is, is constantly growing, and so, if you just block something and say, we're only going to let through the things that we say are okay, there, there's lots of new things growing, so somebody has to then come to us, teachers... Once again, I don't want to defend gaming here, that's not what I'm trying to do, I'm just trying to explain the, the vastness of the internet and the challenges with whitelisting at that level.
And that's my question, why do we even have gaming to begin with? I mean, what, what educational value is there for that?
Yeah, that's another one that I would defer to our principals and our teachers, and we have this other educational mission, and that's to prepare our kids when they go to college. And so, we can keep our environments locked down very tight all the way through 12th grade, and then, we know they'll go to college without, you know, maybe have... and then we know they'll go to college without, you know, maybe having the benefit of learning how to properly deal with this. Maybe not, you know, and once again, we'll do whatever you guys want.
Yeah, but gaming, gaming, it seems to me like it's something like a recreational thing that they want to do while they're in the classroom. I, I don't know.
You'd have to take a deeper dive into what gaming and what ga- what is defined as gaming, right? And so, so do I think that, um, that, that, that there are, are games out there that can engage kids and provide, uh, provide, um, relevant educational value at the high school level? Yes, are all games good? No. Um, I think that's what makes this tricky, you know, to, to Andrew's point, what would be the ideal is we would just whitelist the games that we wanted. But the, but the, the, the time, the hours, the manpower that it would take to stand that up is, I think, the, the value proposition that we have to consider. Right, I mean, you're talking about significance, and, and we're talking about high school kids, right? We've already, we've already, we've already shut down social media and gaming in elementary and middle school. Those things are, those things are blocked, right? When we're thinking about high school, and we're thinking about, you know, the big ones, the Fortnite, you know, some of these other, other, um, games that, that are blocked. Um, I think that's what we have to consider. Um, so, you know, thinking about what it is, the ideal, right? The ideal that what we would want, the ideal environment that we would want, and then what would it take for us to get there, and then, and then considering that? But I would say that there are games that, that do provide value. They might not be games in the sense of like a, a video game, but things that would fall in that category that would provide relevant value that I think help. But there's also probably games that don't, so it's complicated. And, and it's something that, that I think that we're open to continuing to look at and, and review. And I believe the policy that, that, that we've put forth has an annual review process. So we can continue to have these con- like, we're not gonna shy away from these conversations. We're not gonna say, oh, policy's done, right? These are gonna be ongoing conversations because this is gonna continue to grow.
Donna?
I do like the idea of the whitelisting, only because back in the day, when I was in the classroom and, you know, all this was up and coming, uh, we had to, as teachers, request, can you unblock this? Because I'm gonna use this in the classroom today. I, help me understand why it would require more staff on the whitelisting.
So what you just described is whitelisting. So you're in class, and now you've run into something you want to use. You have to get ahold of us, and then we have to put it through a vetting process, and then we turn it, you know, turn it on or not. You know, there's some things that we get requested to turn on that we don't turn on because when you start peeling back the onion, you start reviewing data privacy policies, and you realize they don't have one, you know, we just don't turn them on, even though the teacher would like them. And we ran into two of them today, and as Sam and I were working on ad-blocking discussions. By the way, we've been working on this and trying different things. Three of them came up, little Chrome extensions for blocking. We went and pulled the information, I had my security guy go deep on them. One of them didn't have a, a student data privacy policy, and the contact was a Gmail account. I'm not comfortable saying turn that on. Another one had a gray policy, but it was hosted overseas, and it said, anybody under the age of sixteen can't use it. So now it looked good from a, you know, GDPR, the European standards, which are much higher than ours, but it had age restrictions. So each one of these, we have to spend time to really understand what's underneath the, the covers. Well, and so, um, yeah, so Shelley, your point, I'm gonna repeat it because I'm, I'm not sure everybody heard you. Kids have access to those now. We are gonna be going to the whitelisting for the extensions. The extensions are a little bit different than every single URL, every single website out there. It's complicated.
Okay, um, Katie?
So I just have one question, and then, but before that, I just want to say what a great job you all have been doing. You've worked really hard on this, and we can tell, and I know our parents are happy that you're listening to them. So kudos to you for doing this. My question is, where are we on social media in high school? Is it just all available, or are there conversations about limiting it or blocking it?
Yeah, so at this moment in time, it's blocked, once again, K through eight, and then it is open from ninth through tenth, the big six, big six, big seven. We block the category social media even through high school, but then we open up the Facebooks, the Twitters, the Instagrams, um, LinkedIn, Snapchat. I'm missing a couple there. So if there's a new social media that hasn't been known, vetted, it will get blocked. But the big ones are open, um, at this point in time.
And what, Rob, do you know what the principals think about that? Do they have an opinion on whether or not there should be social media?
At, at this point, I have not heard concerns around social media from the high school principals. And, uh, you know, we, earlier this year, we, we heard mixed reviews from middle school principals on whether it should stay on or off, and we turned it off. So, um, you, you know, as we think about seventeen, eighteen-year-old kids and, um, and, um, having access to those, those programs, you know, certainly concerns. Um, but at this point, I, I haven't, I haven't heard concerns to the extent that we would th- think about limiting those ac- their access at this point. But again, in the policy, you know, the policy is designed to continuously review. So, you know, I think that's, that's where we're at with that right now.
Can I ask, the, students a- access social media through their phones anyway, right?
Right, so that's one of the dilemmas, even if we shut it off at high school, if they have their phones.
It's interesting, I'm not a big social media fan, but they all have phones and they're using them at some point, somewhere. I mean, I don't know if blocking them makes a difference at that point, unfortunately.
It's interesting that in this boardroom right now, if you're connected to our guest network, you know, things like Snapchat are blocked and Facebook are blocked in here. So your phone will hang up if you're connected to our wifi, but you turn off the wifi, and your phone connects to its own network, and away it goes.
Shelley?
I was just gonna say, that's one of the other good reasons for having a cellphone caddy in the classroom. At, at least they're only doing social media while they're walking through the halls, not during class time, so. And if there's classroom management software on their computers, then the teacher can be watching and making sure they're not on Facebook. So y- you can handle that without banning social media by doing those two things. I just have one other comment on the policy. On page four, under safety, you know, we've heard a lot about screen time and the implications of excessive screen time. So I wonder if there should be a caution in there under the safety category. Um, and we've also heard parents, and maybe Andrew, while you're up here, I can ask you this. We've also heard parents say they want to understand how much screen time their kids are experiencing at school, and so they're asking for some way where they can log into a portal and see, oh, my kid was on a screen four hours today. Is that possible to do, first of all?
Not with Go Guardian today. Go Guardian is working on a parent portal that would be similar to a tool like Securely. Sometimes you hear Securely being discussed. So not today. The teachers can see the dashboard and see the usage, um, but we went back and looked at what they would need to do to create a comprehensive report, and it's a lot of work. So we don't think that we have a solution today for that parent portal. We're optimistic that Go Guardian will produce one, um, in the near future. It may be additional cost, we don't know how they're gonna market it or price it. We'll just have to wait to see on that.
So, um, I wonder then, short of being able to do that right now, if there could be some caution under the safety section that says the district is aware of the potential health implications of excessive screen time? And, um, and somehow there'd be a phrase in there about staff is encouraged to minimize the amount of s- screen time in their classrooms, you know?
Some, some verbiage around.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure, yeah, and I think that, that we could also, um, add some language that, um, we are recommending to staff, which is that we really prohibit screen time unless it's directly related to educational outcomes.
But what if staff thinks that that should be the entire hour, and six teachers in a row think that? And so the total screen time is six hours in a six-hour day, like, what's to prevent that from happening, I guess?
It's a good point.
I think there was also discussion that the teachers, um, could articulate how much, um, work is being done electronically and communicate that through Schoology or the other tools we have to communicate with the parents. So there was a little more transparency.
I, I think we have work to do on this. I do, I, I, I mean, I'm sensitive to, uh, this, this idea of informing parents what type of screen time their kids are getting access to so they can manage and monitor the screen time at home. I know that's important to a lot of our parents, we're sensitive to that. I don't know that we have that answer today. But, um, but I, I think it's something that we need to be sensitive to. We need to be continuing to think about how can we, um, either communicate or, or start to set expectations around what that should look like and not look like. Um, you know, we have expectations around homework and the percentage of, you know, the time for homework, right? That, that kids should, um, be spending depending upon their age. There isn't really a guy, I mean, I think that there's, that there, there's lots of emerging information around there on, you know, screen times, and I don't know that we found one recommendation for if you're this old, this is how much screen time you should get or not get. I think a lot of folks are just nervous about, about excess screen time, um, which, you know, from what we've seen and what, what Andrew and Sam have shared with me is on a case-by-case, and there's kind of things that you, that you watch and monitor with your kids. And, and when they're, when they're displaying certain behaviors, is that's, you know, that's kind of signs that maybe they've had too much. But I just think it's something that, the information that we need to pay attention to, um, I think this is an opportunity for us to, to really lean in on, on this topic. But today, um, having a, having a clear recommendation, I don't know that we have the information yet. But to your point, Shelley, you know, can we put some things in here around screen time? I think that we can look at that and adjust that.
We also have one other tool, um, the, um, the browser history is not erased on student Chromebooks. So if a parent wants to know exactly where a student has been during the day, once again, they can call us and we can produce that report for them. Or show them how to get into the student Chromebook to get it themselves.
Other comments on this policy? I, I have a, a silly comment, it's on the first page. On the seventh lane, a sentence down, it says hone computer instead of home computer? Yeah, it's not home. Oh, it is hone, oh my goodness. Okay, so I misread it. All right, any other comments? It's getting pretty late.
And the font is very small.
I, I think I'm getting old, I, so what's going on over here? All right, um, any other comments on JS? Okay, all right, so we have just a few more policies to go that I think will be a little, I think we should just push on, if that's okay? Shall we go to the healthy food guidelines?
So essentially, this is just a regulation, um, brought to the board for information. I know Anna's still here. Um, and it's really to address the coffee cart issue and allowing, um, when it's through a program supporting students with IEPs, that it would be okay, such as the Monarch High School coffee cart.
I see. Yeah, Sam, you had a question?
Well, I guess what we're saying is it's okay to sell caffeinated beverages to kids because we feel like the, um, the learning experience for the students who operate the cart is of a higher value than, um, I think, kids being able to order unhealthy beverages. Is that kind of what we're saying? I mean, you know, I, I've read that caffeine, no caffeine is recommended for little kiddos, and then if you're a teenager, I think the American Academy of Pediatrics says like one eight-ounce cup of coffee a day is the recommended amount of caffeine. So I get a little concerned the kids are gonna be, you know, pulling up to that cart and ordering like the giant mocha latte or whatever filled with mega caffeine and a bunch of sugar, which is counter to everything you're trying to do at our schools in Cooper. Thank you for your efforts. It's getting late.
Yes, so, before I came, so going back more than a decade ago, the board put into policy a no caffeine, there was no caffeine. And when I came, there was no caffeine. And there was, at some point about eight years ago, a coffee cart at Fairview that we shut down because the, they weren't following the policy. And then at that point, the principal and the students came in and spoke to the then-board and made their case to have caffeine, and the board said no. More recently, there's, program got started, uh, unbeknownst to me, but a program got started at Monarch where the, some of the sped and the ILC kids had, were selling, uh, caffeinated beverages as a way to learn skills. And it, it really was, and I think is, a school-to-work program for, for kids that really needed it. When I came to see what was going on, I, we realized we were, they were out of compliance, and our tri-annual audit for the Food Service Department is coming up, so we were trying to get our arms around this, and by law, we have to follow our own policy, and we were out of compliance with our own policy. So after looking at the program and talking to the people in charge and spending some time with the principal, I, I do believe that there is an educational component for these specific kids. I think that's different than, you know, school stores and, and things having caffeine. Um, one of the things for them to be able to do is, is they have to follow all the other guidelines. So there can't be unlimited sugar, and there can't, there can only be one percent in non-fat dairy, and they can't have all the syrups, they have to follow all the rest of the guidelines. There's pretty tight guardrails on this, so it can, it's only a specific day part, it's only for these specific educational opportunities. But Sam, to your point, yes. The question becomes whether we think that an educational opportunity for this specific cohort of our community overrides what some research would say is that high school kids shouldn't have caffeine.
Yeah, maybe it could just be decaf, or like they got the juicer there, they're making juice drinks, you know?
Yes, I suggested decaf.
I don't have any angst about this change to the regulation because it seems like it's got a lot of guardrails on it.
Well, it's a regulation, and so if this doesn't work out, you guys can change it, right?
Yes, I think that's absolutely true.
Well, I, I don't think this one's up to me.
Kids are all hopped up.
Hey, I think the kids will like it.
What's this saying, because it came to your attention? Because I know it's Centaurus, ILC is selling food out of their.
If they are, I didn't know that was going on, and we could go check that out. It's, it's not allowed, so just to be clear. Uh, I think that's my phone. Okay, so to be clear, uh, under the wellness policy, the board's wellness policy that we just updated a few months ago, the last time I was here, we have to bylaw abide by all the smart snack guidelines, this is CDE and USDA, and we can't have school stores selling anything that is not compliant, including daypart and very specific nutritional guidelines. Unfortunately, even though we've reminded the principals numerous times in noteworthy and through other means, then it becomes my, like, oh, now they're doing it at Centaurus, thank you, we'll go out there and check it out. So, um, it's not supposed to be happening, it's against the USDA/CD guidelines. They are coming the week of March fourth, and if they go into a school and find this going on, they're gonna find the district. End of story, we will get fined.
We about to approve a policy that is going to get us fined?
No. If you have a policy, and this is the policy, and we were very careful how we wrote it, and Melissa's been over it, then we are allowing this to exist, and then that's our policy, and we're abiding by our own policy. If we don't change it, the store has to shut down, or the coffee shop has to shut down because it's outside of the policy. But if we approve this reg, which is not a policy, but if we approve this reg that's attached to the wellness policy, then we are within our own guidelines.
March fourth, all right.
March fourth, they're coming, all of them.
Okay, um, are we okay with this regulation? This is a notification, we don't have to do anything, we'll never have to vote. Okay, so Sam's, oh, all right. Well, the, we'll, we'll try it and adjust, I'm sure that you'll all adjust as necessary. Okay, so we have school attendance areas. This is a change? Melissa, it looks like we took out some specific geographic language that should probably be somewhere else, and now we just have a broader policy, is that the?
So this is actually a new policy, and then the regulation, the recommendation is to delete it.
Right.
Um, and this has been the. Um, and this has been, the policy's been vetted through Rob Price and Glenn Tegrew. Um, so it aligns with CASB and also picks up a few of our, um, practices um, to make sure we capture all of, um, the elements that they end up looking at. Um, and then nobody thought we needed the JC dash R anymore.
Okay.
So just to.
Kathy, whoops, Kathy, sorry, sorry.
Well, this just came up today during our visit to Heatherwood. I'm just curious, when we are facing declining enrollment, how often do we look at district, school district boundaries and make sure things are balanced? I know it's a loaded issue for families, but I'm just curious how often it comes up for review at the staff level to look at how our staffing is being.
To be honest with you, Kathy, I'm going to have to ask Glenn and follow up and, and respond to an RFI to you.
Yeah, I'll do an RFI.
Okay.
Great, uh, Richard?
So if, if we pass this policy, then, uh, you know, if I'm looking at the second paragraph, uh, the establishing school boundaries consideration should be given to the compactness of the boundaries. Uh, and I'm thinking about the Columbine Elementary School attendance area, for example. There's not, there's not a whole lot of compactness there. Does that mean that we would go and rezone or what, 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 what would, what would happen there?
Well, I, let me address this in an RFI. Glenn would be best to address this. The last time we've addressed school boundaries is when we added Metal Arc.
Metal Arc.
Metal Arc School in Erie, so let's address this through an RFI if you don't mind.
Right, and I do like how it spells out the process for how we would do that, which is important, I think, as these issues come up. All right, um, shall we move on to compulsory attendance? Okay?
So the compulsory attendance ages and entrance age requirements are also both new policies based on CASB model. I think we've agreed as staff that it makes sense to have these policies. And then the other one that you, um, I don't know if you, it was intentional, jumped over is the JLIB student dismissal precautions. And that's another proposed new policy based on CASB language. Um, that, I would say is certainly consistent with our practice, but I, I, I think we'd recommend, and I know the assistant superintendent's had a look at this policy as well and we're in favor of having this specific guidance for the schools in terms of release of students during the middle of the school day.
So this only is?
An early release.
It's, okay, so what if a student, I mean, and we have open campuses at some of our high schools.
It's not addressing the, the end of the school day dismissal process. It's releasing kids during the school day.
And so if they have an off period, they can leave as they wish?
Well, that's, yeah.
Well, in an open ca- that's why I'm just bringing up this case. We have two open campuses, so I think the kids come and go pretty much as they wish during the school day and there's no way to moderate, monitor that at this point.
I mean, they still require the, the sign out when somebody comes in to the office to get their child.
I don't, not when they, I don't think they're doing any signing in or out. I'm not sure.
Well, not when individual students are leaving, yeah.
My feedback would just be make sure that this works with the practice at the open campus high schools.
Mm-hmm, okay. I will definitely, um, make sure that staff follows up on that question before it's brought back.
Okay. Um, questions about compulsory attendance, age, entrance requirements? Yeah, okay, is that it?
Before we move on from policy, um, this is Melissa's last meeting with us before she moves on. And, um, I don't want to embarrass her, but, uh, it's been such a pleasure and joy to get to work with you, Melissa. We are going to miss you and, uh, just thank you, um, for the, the monumental task of, of getting us on track to be reviewing our policies. I just think you've done an awesome job and, um, I know you're not going far away, so just keep your phone handy.
Okay, so, um, our next item is agenda setting. Any comments or additions, RFIs? Sam?
Doing RFI around, um, what it would take to get the district to a hundred percent renewable power. You know, the air conditioning discussion is, is frustrating to me because of course, like all of us, I want optimal thermal comfort for our students. But it's always bugged me on the other side that the problem we're addressing, the warming climate and the need for air conditioning is caused by, uh, the burning of fossil fuels. So I wonder if, uh, I'll just do an RFI on it.
That's a great one, thanks. Thanks for doing that.
I did an RFI on the by literacy seal and I would like to, at some point, talk a bit more in depth on, on that because I've got some concerns around that.
Okay, Laura, do you want to add that to our? Something, and it might make sense to see if it rolls into another discussion or if it needs to be a separate item. If it fits in somewhere, Kathy?
I'll do an RFI on this as well, but I was just curious where we are in updating our writing curriculum. We just did the literacy curriculum and it was raised today um, that our writing curriculum might not be as aligned with the, whatever the name is because I'm late and I'm tired, the literacy curriculum. So I'd like, yeah, Fontis and Fennell. So I'll do an RFI on where we are in that timing.
Okay. Shelley?
I just have a question before I make an agenda suggestion. So, um, Rob, is, can you explain why, um, we need to roll out additional Chromebooks right in March versus waiting till the fall since we only have six weeks of school left, essentially? Or I guess it's March one, so it's more than six weeks, but.
So, so I can do one of two things. I can bring Sam or Andrew up or I can, I can respond to you all in news and notes on kind of some of the rationale and reasonings around that. Um, whatever, whatever the preference for the board is.
I mean, I, I guess I'd like to hear it tonight if it's just briefly because they will have rolled out, right, by the, almost by the next time we meet or?
Yeah, so right now we're scheduled to go ahead and, and roll out to a set of new schools, um, on March first. So, um, the plan is to go ahead and move forward with that rollout. We know that there are a few things that we haven't figured out in the recommendations. For example, we haven't completed a pilot of the on-device filtering. Um, and we, we do get that that's a concern. Um, however, parents can request that the Chromebooks do stay at school and don't come home.
But, but like, I mean, March seems like an odd time to roll them out. Like, why wouldn't you just wait till the fall when all the existing Chromebooks have had the filtering on them and everybody's on the same page starting in the fall?
So we, we, we have had some, uh, pressure from our middle-level principals who are expecting these, um, to get these Chromebooks out to students. So, I mean, we, we are feeling some pressure from our s- building leaders to get these Chromebooks deployed. There also is a concern about a significant number of our Chromebooks aging out and not being able to handle the state assessments that are coming. And without the additional Chromebooks that we, uh, we're going to add under this deployment, we might be short of devices to be able to do that state testing efficiently.
Okay, I, I guess I, um, the state testing's one thing. Um, I, I wouldn't think that we'd give into pressure from principals if it meant that we were n- not putting web filtering on there that needs to be on there or, y- you know, taking the precautions that we need to do, having the training in place, whatever it is that we, we want to do to make sure these are used safely. Seems like that would take priority.
You know, I, I, I absolutely have heard a lot of concerns from our parents and I have a lot of empathy for their concerns about the safety for their kids. Um, and safety is absolutely a high priority for us in this district. I do believe that with the classroom management software that we're putting in place, that we have some really great safeguards about what happens in the context of the classroom during the school day. And for parents who aren't comfortable having the device come home, the device doesn't have to come home. The device can stay at school. Um, given those things, I would say that personally, I feel comfortable with the rollout in March. I understand not everybody else may agree with that or be there, but I believe that I feel comfortable with us rolling these devices out on March first.
Well, I appreciate that you have those safeguards in place. That certainly is a lot better than not having them in place. Okay, thanks.
Um, other comments or questions? Okay, so I'd like to adjourn the meeting.